Recording in progress.
Good morning. My computer is showing that it's 10 o'clock, 10 a.m. So at this time, I'll call to order the August 4th, 2022, regular meeting of the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. At this time, I would ask for Ms. Julia King, Sunday School Superintendent of the East or the First Church of Christ Scientists in Carson City, Nevada, to give us an invocation to be led by, and followed by, the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner John Ingalls. So please remove your hats and stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Do I do this first? No, the pledge first?
No, I'll be four hundred. So please, please.
Oh, okay, sorry. Hello, everybody. My name is Julia King. I'm from the First Church of Christ Scientists up in Carson, and I'm going to read from a poem that was written by the founder of the church I go to. It's called "Love." I'm going to read parts of it. "Brewed o'er us with thy sheltering wing, 'neath which our spirits blend; like brother birds that soar and sing, and on the same branch bend. The arrow that doth wound the dove darts not from those who watch in love. If thou the bending reeds would break, by thought or word unkind, pray that his spirit you partake, who loved and healed mankind. Seek holy thoughts and heavenly strain, that make men one in love remain. Thou, too, whose power our hope we give, free us from human strife. Fed by thy love, divine we live; for love alone is life. In life most sweet, has heart to heart, speaks kindly when we meet and part, and may this meeting proceed in perfect harmony and brotherly love. Amen." Thank you.
Okay, all current former military and law enforcement, that means you, Elges, salute the flag. Present arms, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. King. At this time, we'll go into public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the board chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin and then a yellow light, which indicates that you have 30 seconds left and should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, we ask you to please sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified for possible action and closing public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. I would ask you to, please, those of you here, to silence your electronic devices so we don't have a possible interruption of a speaker. And when you approach the microphone, if you would print your name on the sign-in sheet there on the podium and then state your name for the record. Is there anybody who, here in chambers, who wishes at this time to present public comment? And I would also, once again, remind you that we will be taking public comment during the administrative items that are marked for possible action, so this is the time for opening public comment, not for action items on the agenda. So is there any in chambers opening public comment? Don't everybody rush the microphone at once? Okay. So at this time, wait a minute, we're still on public comment. Melissa, Ms. Elges, is there anybody online who wishes to offer public comment?
Thank you, Melissa Elges, for the record. Yes, we do have one public comment online. Gibson, are you there? Mr. Gibson, can you hear me? I'm not sure why he can't hear me.
Ms. Elges, does he have his hand raised?
He does.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Gibson, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, thank you. Can you folks hear me? Testing, one, two, three.
We can hear you.
Thank you very much. I have an echo here and some kind of tech, which I apologize for that. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Douglas County. It's Jason Garrett on behalf of the House. Gibson, thank you for that invocation this morning and the pledge. We trust you folks had a, or the Commissioners had a meaningful experience at the regional conference, and again, I have to apologize as I have an echo here watching while I'm contributing to this meeting. I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. I revised a post that John elected to share on the neighborhood social network. Thank you for that. That's what Commissioners do, is they socially network and communicate with the general public about water, about resource management and drought. I responded to a gentleman named Michael who elaborated on some of John's research regarding our water management, and I said, "Thank you for the insight. Thank you for the research and what have you." I refined this somewhat to keep it brief, but we're at a serious crossroads. We know this is the last meeting for the next three months, which is just mind-boggling considering everything that's going on, not just locally but abroad. Sadly, the educational track record of our state-of-the-line conference, obvious. We have a very low IQ of awareness here in Nevada, and the global pandemic won't wait, the world war is not going to wait, the civil unrest is not going to wake. The Christians are waiting on Jesus to do it for us, and our nation and global economy are at the brink of self-destruction. How we can take a hiatus for three months is beyond me, but obviously, the ecology is stressed, and half the United States is experiencing a drought. The de facto government of the United States has us all locked down into a perpetual state of emergency under the War Powers Act. Law enforcement, the military-industrial complex are getting rich, and it's business as usual. Discovery of the law of time shows how the park contains the whole gentleman. On around May 19th, the United States overwhelmingly approved a $40 billion emergency military humanitarian aid package, committing the American people to fund another world war, and on the same day, our county elected to fund the militarization of law enforcement to the tune of $55 million, following suit with our national government. Under the COVID pandemic, most government employees have been drawing a full-time salary working from home, and this board chose to give them a 7% to 9% raise. Over the last three to five months, we've witnessed this board and D.C. Administrates allocate over $900 million, and not one dollar is being allocated towards the peace plan or toward...
Melissa Elges, for the record, there is no further public comment online at this time.
Thank you. So first of all, Mr. Gibson's still online, I want to make just a couple of comments. Number one, the, I would ask that you show our Commissioners the respect that we show you by calling you by your surname, and so when you refer to Commissioners, I would ask you to do the same, rather than their first name. We would appreciate that. Number two, you indicated that we aren't, not meeting for another quarter, and that is incorrect, and I, and that's important that the public understand that we meet every two weeks. We meet on the first Thursday of the month, and we meet on the third Thursday of the month at 10 o'clock in these chambers unless we call any other additional special meetings. So the public needs to completely understand that. In regards to the budget, we have a total budget in the county of around $60 million, if I'm not mistaken. I know Ms. Willoughby is here today, our CFO, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a total budget of around $60 million, and so therefore, there is no method of us awarding our, trust me, Dan, Sheriff Coverley would be welcome $55 million, but I don't know that we would give him 95% of our budget. So with all due respect, Mr. Coverley, you know, we appreciate our law enforcement community, but not to that tune of, of, of that much. Okay? So unfortunately, Mr. Gibson, you, you have a lot of your facts incorrect, and I would ask you to please take a look at, at doing that. So anyways, with that, we, we, I don't see any other public comment here in chambers, no other public comment online. However, Mr. Ingalls indicated a desire to have a few minutes, so, Mr. Ingalls, you have, you have the floor.
Thank you. You've all seen in the news about the Chinese Communist acquiring land in the United States, Oklahoma, Texas, North Dakota, and I don't even know what else they have acquired. And we have very valuable ranchland here. It is fertile, have water, we have grass-fed beef, and I've just gotten wind of a Chinese gentleman, I'm not xenophobic, from somewhere in the Bay Area, acquiring some ranchland here in the area. Nobody knows what he's going to do with it. He has indicated he's not going to do anything with it, except just own it, lease it out to a ran, to a cattle, somebody's running cattle. But the problem we've got is, is that we are in a war with the Chinese Communists, and I don't have anything against any particular group, but they have something against us. So I talked to the DA about what we could do about this. Well, we're kind of stuck because I wanted to put in an, an agenda item that Douglas County would forbid the acquisition of agricultural land, mineral rights, or water rights by any foreign entity here in Douglas County. That's as far as we can go. But come to find out, the NRS has a law that says we cannot discriminate due to race, color, or creed. Well, I'm kind of tired of that because of what's being done to us Americans, and so that means that we have to go through the legislature to get that changed. So start thinking about contacting your legislator because the legislation is going to be coming up in January, and we've got to get that changed quick so that they can't buy anything in the state of Nevada in the, in the way of ranchland mineral rights. I don't even know what kind of minerals we've got here. I know we've got a lot of gold, but what if we have rare earth and things like that? And we know we have water, they could buy up a lot of water rights and then refuse to let us use it. So it's time to quit playing nice and realize that we do have an existential threat from the Chinese Communist, and it's just about ready to get worse, and God help us, I hope it doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingalls. I think you're correct. I think the appropriate place for us to address that issue is with our state legislature, so they're the ones that have control of that. Anyways, moving on to the approval of the agenda for possible action, approval of the proposed agenda, the Board of Commissioners reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda or delay discussion relating to items on the agenda. I have noticed before we, after publishing of the agenda, that it's my insight that item number 12 regarding the fire spick coordinates will probably be a long and drawn-out process, therefore, and I know that I don't want to keep folks that are here for that item tied up all day, so I'm going to take the prerogative to move that item from item number 12 to item number three on our agenda directly after the presentation so that those of you who are here and wish to offer public comment in regards to that item can do so early and then get on with the rest of your day. So I anticipate that we will accomplish that and, and not be taking a recess for lunch until that item is concluded. So I just want to let you know all of that. So at this time, I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda with the movement of item 12 to item number three.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented with the exception of moving item number 12 to item number three.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingalls, to approve the draft minutes of July 24th, 2022, and July 27th, 2022, special meetings of the Board of County Commissioners. I entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Ingalls, to approve the draft minutes of July 24th, 2022, and July 27th, 2022, special meetings of the Board of County Commissioners. Since he no corrections, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. In that regard, I should have indicated earlier for the record that Commissioner Noa Sad is out of town on family business and so will not be attending today, obviously not in person, and has chosen not to participate via Zoom either, which was his prerogative. So items will be, there were just the four Commissioners, Commissioner Tarkanian, Commissioner Ingalls, Commissioner Rice, and myself that are in chambers today. So approval of previous minutes for possible action discussion to approve the draft minutes of July 24th, 2022, and the July 27th, 2022, special meetings of the Board of County Commissioners. I entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Ingalls, to approve the draft minutes of July 24th, 2022, and July 27th, 2022, special meetings of the Board of County Commissioners. Since he no corrections, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. We will now go into recess as the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners and reconvene or convene as the Douglas County Liquor Board. This board, as indicated, serves in many capacities. The Board of County Commissioners is just one capacity, the Liquor Board is another, the Redevelopment Agency is another, and the Health Board as another. But, so at this time, we will go into session as the Douglas County Liquor Board. That board also includes Sheriff Dan Coverley, so he will be a voting member of this board. And item number, I guess roman numeral one, for possible action discussion to approve the addition of store director and key employee Shanae Simmons to the existing packaged liquor, a retail liquor license for Target Store T-1239, DBA Target, represented by Shanae Simmons. Shanae Simmons, I, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Shanae Simmons has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Target Store T-1239, DBA Target, is located at 911 Jacks Valley Road, Carson City, Nevada, 89705. I did want to indicate that even though it has a Carson City address that is still Douglas County, so that's why we are, are visiting that area. And in lieu of Captain Mitch Tarian, I see our undersheriff, Mr. Elges.
Thank you, Chair. Undersheriff Ron Elges, for the record, Captain Mitch Tarian is on vacation again, so I'm here. The application is completed, and we are not contesting this one.
Did I hear you right? You said "again"? Okay. Anyways, Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Elges? Okay. This is a possible action item, so we will entertain public comment during this time. So is there any public comment here in chambers? Does not appear that we have any comments here in chambers. Is there any comments in regards to this item on Zoom, Ms. Elges? You two know each other, right?
Melissa Elges, for the record, there is no public comment online at this time.
Very good. So we'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the addition of store director and key employee Shanae Simmons to the existing package retail liquor license for Target Store T-1239, doing business as Target. It's located at 911 Jacks Valley Road.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingalls, to approve the addition of store director and key employee Shanae Simmons to the existing package retail liquor license for Target Store T-1239, located at 911 Jacks Valley Road, Carson City, Nevada, 89705. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Roman numeral two for possible action discussion to approve adding, boy, I'm going to butcher this one, Gerpreet Singh to the existing packaged retail liquor license for Chahal Brothers Incorporated, DBA Carson Country Market. Mr. Singh has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Chatal, Chahal Brothers Incorporated, DBA Carson Country Market, is located at 924 Mica Drive, Unit A, Carson City, Nevada, 89705. Once again, that falls within the boundaries of Douglas County. Mr. Elges.
Thank you, sir. Undersheriff Ron Elges, for the record. Again, the application is complete, and we are not contesting the application.
Once again, this is a possible action, so I'll entertain a public comment at this time. Since he no public comment, Ms. Elges, is there any public comment online?
Melissa Elges, for the record, at this time, there is no public comment online.
Very good. Bring it back to the board. Further discussion? Any discussion or questions? Since he none, all those in favor. Well, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion of adding Gerpreet Singh to the existing package retail liquor license for Chahal Brothers, Inc., doing business as Carson County Market.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Ingalls, to approve the adding Gerpreet, Gerpreet Singh to the existing package retail liquor license for Chahal Brothers Incorporated, Carson Country Market, located at 924 Mica Drive, Unit A, Carson City, Nevada, 89705. Since he no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. So we will now adjourn as the Douglas County Liquor Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Consent calendar. Items appearing on the consent calendar are items that can be adopted with one motion unless an item is pulled by a Commissioner or a member of the public. That did not take place in either case, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar items A through R as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Rice, to approve the consent calendar as presented, items A through R. Since he no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Okay. We get on to the administrative calendar. Item number one, so item number one is for presentation only, ceremonial presentation of proclamation 2022P-084, recognizing the hard work and dedication exhibited by the players, coaches, and families of the Carson Valley Little League Organization. And I'm going to come down to the podium to do that as they march in. Are you lost?
Yes.
This is your county assessor, Trent Toland, who has an office just across the way, so that's why I made that comment. Anyways, this, this is reminiscent of my days as a, as a father back in the, a few decades ago. I was in the restaurant business, and restaurant businesses, if you don't know, involves a lot of nights and weekends, and it, as my boys got older, I recognized that I wasn't having the, what I felt was the necessary time to, to play with, play ball with them or anything else. So I decided to get out of the restaurant business and take a job as an outside salesman that gave me the opportunity to go to work when I wanted to and take off when I wanted to, as long as my sales quotas were met and my customers are satisfied. And I have to admit that that was probably some of the most rewarding times of my life. And what Little League baseball brings to the youth and teamwork and camaraderie and, and the opportunity to have fathers and mothers...
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Rice to approve the consent calendar as presented, items A through R. Since no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Okay. We get on to the administrative calendar. Item number one. So item number one is for presentation only. Ceremonial presentation of proclamation 2022 P-084, recognizing the hard work and dedication exhibited by the players, coaches, and families of the Carson Valley Little League Organization. And I'm gonna come down to the podium to do that as they march in. Keep coming, keep coming.
Yes.
This is your county assessor, Trent Toland, who has an office just across the way, so that's why I made that comment. Anyways, this is reminiscent of my days as a father back in the few decades ago. I was in the restaurant business. And restaurant businesses, if you don't know, involves a lot of nights and weekends. And as my boys got older, I recognized that I wasn't having the, what I felt was the necessary time to play ball with them or anything else. So I decided to get out of the restaurant business and take a job as an outside salesman that gave me the opportunity to go to work when I wanted to and take off when I wanted to, as long as my sales quotas were met and my customers are satisfied. And I have to admit that that was probably some of the most rewarding times of my life. And what Little League Baseball brings to the youth and teamwork and camaraderie and the opportunity to have fathers and mothers involved with their kids in this fashion is commendable. And I know my children, even though it probably set back my career a little bit, I still wouldn't give up those days for anything in the world. So I'm tempted to share one thing with you. I'll ask you a little riddle here. Do you know the difference between the U.S. Congress and Little League Baseball? Anybody? Anybody have the answer to that? Well, Little League Baseball has adult leaders. Just an observation. So anyways, so it gives me a great deal of pleasure to present this on the behalf of the Board of Commissioners, proclamation 2022 P-084. Whereas Little Leagues and communities throughout the nation have made it possible for thousands of young boys and girls to take an active part in our national game of baseball. And whereas Little League Baseball not only promotes the physical well-being of the players, but also instills into them the qualities of fairness, cooperation, and discipline qualities which contribute to the development of good citizenship. And whereas Carson Valley Little League achieved a tremendous '22 season as two teams won division championships. The Boys 12, and I believe that's U, it means under?
Yes.
Yes, okay. 12-U All-Stars and the Boys Juniors 14-U All-Stars. And whereas the 12-U and 14-U All-Stars both went on to play in the state championships in Las Vegas, representing Carson Valley for the first time in 24 years. Very commendable. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to wish to recognize the hard work and dedication exhibited by the players, coaches, and families of Carson Valley Little League Organization, and to celebrate and honor the significant achievements of these teams. And the organization adopted this fourth day of August, 2022, Douglas County Board of Commissioners. So I don't know who is receiving this. So at this time, if the coaches have anything they wish to say to our community?
Oh, I think I can.
You may, sure. And this is one of our county employees, by the way. She works for the Clerics Office, but I just wanted to let you know that she is not on the clock, okay? So.
Thank you, Chairman, for reading that into the record. Michelle Pablo, for the record. This was just something to publicly recognize the team for their hard work and teamwork. The Boys worked so hard to get there and played from the freezing temps of February and March through the ridiculous heat of Las Vegas in July. Fun. Thank you to the coaches for leading the teams to the state tournament. Your hard work and dedication was so appreciated. Thank you to the public for coming out and donating and supporting the teams. We had the Easy Up Up at Smith's and the Farmer's Market two weeks in a row. I know Trent had his team out there, too. And we were able to raise enough money to so the parents and grandparents didn't have to brunt the full cost of the trip to Vegas. And we may or may not have accosted a few people to donate. And thank you to the businesses who donated. They really came through with their generosity and support. With all the donations, it was just an amazing trip for all of us, a whole week for most of us. So I just wanted to thank everyone involved and say a great job to the coaches, the boys, and of course, the parents and grandparents who lugged these kids all over to play baseball. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Trent Toland. I was fortunate enough to manage the 12-U team this year, and it was an absolute honor. This is a great group of kids. When I was 12, we didn't quite get to make it to a state tournament, but at 13, my team did go to the state tournament, so that was 1994. A couple of years later, as a senior, when I was 15, I played on that team, and we were able to go down to Las Vegas and compete in that tournament. So it's really special to me to be able to be part of this now and coach a team that goes to the tournament. Really, the credit goes to the boys. They're the ones who put in the hard work. Us coaches can only take them so far. So when we give them drills, when we give them things to do, when we try to give them motivational speeches, it's these guys who perform. And so I'm really proud of the kids. I've got to thank my coaches, Ollie Harold, who's here, and Joshua Rogers, who is not, but without them, we wouldn't have had the success that we had. So thank you guys very much. I've also got to thank the Little League Board, especially Janelle, our president, and Stacy, our vice president.
And you're a half-vice president, right?
And our other half-vice president, Ryan Fahy. They worked extremely hard to get us to the state tournament, and I can't thank them enough for that, but really, huge congratulations to these boys. Don't know if you guys know what happened with, at least this group, in the initial round robin tournament. They went 5-0, and then in the next tournament where, you know, it actually mattered where we played the tournament, to win the district title, they went 4-0. So they won nine games straight to win the district title. And then after that, we went on to Vegas, won our first two games, and unfortunately came up short in the championship game. An 11-1 All-Star season, that's not bad. Good job, boys.
Do you have a wide-angle enough camera to get this?
I don't think we can get everyone. I don't think we can get everyone, because we have a small face.
Always great when we can recognize the youth of our community and what the great things they do. Is that right? Once again, congratulations. And by the way, I appreciate you not tearing up our carpet by wearing cleats today. Cleats, you know, baseball cleats. Anyways, thank you, and we'll go on to item number two for presentation only. Presentation on the transfer of Douglas County's private activity bond cap, PABC, to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority, NRHA, for the purpose of providing a means of financing the cost of single-family residential housing at affordable prices for persons of low and moderate income. That is being presented by Donna Greenhut, NRHA Administrative Coordinator. Is that for the state?
My name is Katie Coleman, and I'm with Nevada Rural Housing, and we are not a state agency. We're considered a local government agency, and I am presenting to you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So before you go, I want to preface my comments, preface your comments, I suppose, on this. Several weeks ago, it came before the board, as happens annually, is this agency asked for bonding capability by the county, and we grant that, I've granted it for a number of years, I don't know how many, to the tune of $2.7 million in bonding capability. This is a statewide program. All 17 counties participate in that. However, I felt that it was important, we as Commissioners consistently get asked what we're doing as a Board of Commissioners in trying to provide affordable, attainable workforce housing. And this is an opportunity for our residents to participate in a program where they can possibly tap into that. And that's why I felt it was important for this presentation by this group. And so obviously, if you don't use it, you lose it. So that's what's so important, and that's why I felt like this was an important item to have before us in a presentation only, so that we could gain greater access to this program for our residents. So with that, I'll let you go forward.
Chairman Gardner, thank you so much for that context. Appreciate it. And Commissioners, thank you for your time today. Again, for the record, my name is Katie Coleman. I am the Communications Director for the Nevada Rural Housing Authority. And today, I'm going to provide an update on the Home at Last Home Ownership Program impact within Douglas County specifically, and then provide an overview of the source, use, and limitations of private activity bonds, and why Nevada Rural Housing had requested that transfer of your unused bond cap. Again, on behalf of Nevada Rural Housing, I first wanted to thank you for your approval to transfer the unused bond cap from Douglas County to Nevada Rural Housing. I really do appreciate today's opportunity to provide that detail on how this transfer enables our agency to deliver homeownership solutions to your constituents. That is today's purpose, absolutely. So in 2006, Nevada Rural Housing Authority launched its Home at Last Down Payment Assistance Program and homeownership program overall. And a lot of that is funded by that private activity bond cap. I'll refer to it as bond cap throughout my remarks here. Douglas County has been supportive of the homeownership program from the beginning, since 2006, with nearly $27.9 million in total of unused bond cap transferred to Nevada Rural Housing over those years. So thank you for that. Since 2006, Home at Last has provided 478 Douglas County homebuyers specifically with $108 million in affordable mortgages, nearly $2.3 million in down payment assistance, and $3.5 million in estimated federal tax savings. And I'll explain what those tax savings mean in just a moment. Fifteen years after launching the Home at Last program, the program has helped over 10,000 rural Nevadans. So yes, we do offer this program in every county, but only in the rural parts of those counties specifically, to achieve affordable homeownership. Program-wide, that's a total of $2.2 billion in affordable mortgages, $63 million in down payment assistance overall, and $36 million in estimated federal tax savings returned to homebuyers. And it's important note to say that those federal tax savings come through our mortgage tax credit program. Again, we'll dig into that in just a moment. As the chairman mentioned, earlier in July, we did request that transfer of the unused bond cap to help us continue to operate this program. Again, thank you. It was the $2.7 million in tax-exempt private activity bond volume cap. What a mouthful for the year of 2022. Little background on bond cap, because sometimes I need to wrap my head around it as well. State and local governments can use private activity bonds to issue debt for qualified purposes. So there's very specific purposes. Congress does limit the type and use of private activity bonds to avoid overuse of tax-exempt benefits, of course. A qualified purpose includes things like manufacturing plants, single-family home mortgages, and other purposes that the government considers a public good. When the federal government issues bond cap distribution to Nevada, 50% of that is retained by the Nevada Department of Business and Industry, and then 50% of it is distributed to local cities and counties based on population. The bond cap distributed to cities and counties each year must be designated for one of those qualified purposes by September 1st. So that kind of use-it-or-lose-it factor comes into play with that date, of course. Unused bond cap then reverts to business and industry if it isn't used, if it isn't transferred to an entity like ours for a qualified purpose. The Director of Business and Industry, with the input of the Private Activity Bond Advisory Council, will then decide how any unused bond cap will be used in Nevada. And typically, those are for larger projects in Clark or Washoe Counties. Again, we love that we can pool that and use that in rural Nevada. That is our mission. Transferred of unused bond cap to Nevada Rural Housing does not create any obligation or debt, because bond cap is not money, it's not a line item in a budget. Wanted to make note of that. And by transferring, again, by transferring that bond cap to us, the sole beneficiary is rural Nevada. Our mission is to promote, provide, and finance affordable housing opportunities to all rural Nevadans, and so we make sure that that happens. Okay, so back to Home at Last and connecting the dots on all of this bond cap stuff. So the Home at Last program has been using bond cap transfers to provide the mortgage credit certificate program. We also refer to it as the MCC. So when you hear me say MCC, that's what that is. Aside from providing homeowners with tremendous tax savings year after year for the life of the loan, these tax credits returned to homeowners is money that's reinvested back into your local community. So that's an important note. MCC helps homebuyers qualify for a mortgage, because that estimated tax savings is considered additional qualifying income when they go to apply for a mortgage. It also helps lower debt-to-income ratios. That's a factor when you go to apply for a mortgage. And that also helps folks for carrying student loan debt, as an example. The MCC provides first-time homebuyers, and we also waive that first-time homebuyer requirement in the MCC program for qualified veterans. So we make special exception for our qualified veterans to give them that benefit, with a dollar-for-dollar federal tax credit equal to 20% of the mortgage interest paid every year for the life of the loan, as long as they continue to live in the home as their primary residence. Here are some numbers coming at you, but I think it's an important point to make to understand how this benefits the individual in your community. So for example, if you add the mortgage credit certificate to a $375,000 mortgage with an interest rate of 5.5%, that would generate an estimated tax credit equal to about $4,100 for just the first year of homeownership. $4,100 divided by 12 months, that's $341 a month of additional income to a family. Think about what $341 could mean to a family, especially right now. Inflation, costs, $341 is a lot of money to everyone. And so we really like this MCC. We kind of call it this inflation buster, if you will. Our Home at Last program, which offers mortgage credit certificate and down payment assistance, has really helped your Douglas County residents who are financially ready to get into homeownership finally achieve that dream of homeownership. These are hard-working families. They want to work and continue to thrive in your community. We've assisted teachers, veterans, people in healthcare, people in the service industry. People are really ready to take that important step to start to build that wealth, start to really establish that stability. And it's such a pleasure for us to do so. That is our mission. And in fact, we've actually been in contact with some of the county staff to do some informational presentation about this program to staff. Everyone should absolutely be taking advantage of this program. It's almost too good to be true, but it's absolutely true, and we can do this for everyone who can qualify and is eligible within our rural jurisdictions. So again, we so appreciate your continued support. Since 2006, that is a long time, and we just want to thank you so much for that. You've been part of this process since the very beginning, and that makes a difference in your neighbors, your constituents' lives, as they really want to take that next step in terms of building their individual wealth. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I hope that was a helpful explanation and probably too much information for one spiel, but I'm happy to answer anything.
So this is extremely important information, so I don't think you can give us too much information on this, especially our public. Commissioner Tarkanian, any questions you might have? Commissioner Ingles? No? Commissioner Rice?
Yes, sir.
Page 374, and I would encourage our members of the public to take a look at this program. I didn't realize that we were taking advantage of this program as much as we are. So over the last 16, 15 years that I see that we've been involved in this program, we've had 478 homeowners that have been assisted, and that's an impressive number.
we've had 478 homeowners that have been assisted, and that's an impressive number. That equals about, what did I say, 32 a year. So while that's an impressive number, I suppose it could be larger. Let me ask you this question. So we granted 2.7 million of our bonding capability. If we have homeowners come before you from Douglas County that exceed that 2.7 million, can you tap into the other bonding capabilities that the other counties have given you, or is it restricted to that 2.7 million?
We absolutely can tap into it, and that's the entire concept, is to pool this together to help more rural Nevadans. We can extrapolate the data and understand who's doing what in each of the counties, but we can tap into that pool of funding capability to do as much as we need to. So it's really a neat concept that we discovered the ability to do, and it's worked really well.
Okay. Because I'm looking at Carson City, our residents that are in the Carson City address, 127 in the last 15 years, Gardenville, 261, Menden, 56, State Line 5. I don't know anybody in State Line that needs assistance, Mr. Rice, but whatever. Wellington, 25, Zephyr Co., four. So anyways, it's universal throughout our county, and I appreciate that. How does one of our residents go about tapping into this? How would they do that?
Our website is homeatlastnv.org. We have an 800 number. It's 833-GO-HAL-NV. Home at Last spells H-A-L, HAL. Or we have an email, hal@nvrural.org. Those are just a couple ways to get us, or Google, or Google will point you in our direction very easily, because we're on top of that as well. So we try to be all over it all the time.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. I really appreciate coming before us and giving this information to our public, and I encourage our public to tap into this at your possibility. So anyways, thank you once again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
We're going to go now, flip your page to, as I indicated earlier, we're going to go to item number 12 on our agenda. I'm not sure exactly how long this is going to take, but we're going to wade into this item number 12, and it's my plan to completely conclude this particular item before we take a break for lunch. I anticipate that we're going to need to do that today, because we have a fairly long agenda. But I want to make sure when we start this item, we get through it and complete it in total without taking a break. With that being said, do we need to take a short break to relieve ourselves, or before we get into this item? Everybody's good? Okay, thank you. Okay, item number 12, for possible action. Discussion to adopt Ordinance 2022-1604, an ordinance to amend Title 20, Appendix B of the Consolidated Development Code by revising Section 901.8 of the International Building Code, IBC, as well as Table 903.2.2 of the International Fire Code, IFC, and Section 903.2.4 of the IFC, in order to eliminate the requirement to install automatic fire sprinkler systems in all single-family resident structures less 5,000 square feet outside of the Tahoe-Douglas Fire Protection District. And this is being presented by our Community Development Manager, Mr. Tom Delaire.
Thank you, Chairman Gardner. Tom Delaire, for the record. I've got Jennifer Davidson here, Assistant County Manager as well. She assisted in, well, she prepared the staff report that's attached to this item. This is the second reading of Ordinance 2022-1604, and it begins on your packet page 640. As you stated in the title of the item, this is to, as the board directed, this is bringing back this ordinance to require sprinklers, or not require sprinklers up to, for single-family residential homes up to 5,000, or up to 5,000 square feet. So that's what this ordinance is doing, and I will turn some time over to Jennifer if she wants to add to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, Assistant County Manager, for the record. For context, this is the continuation of a conversation that began in 2019, when the Board of County Commissioners first passed the Ordinance 2019-1545. That ordinance, two years later, was subsequently amended based on some comments from the Northern Nevada Building Alliance and members of the public who were concerned about the overall financial impact and the cost-benefit of the installation of sprinklers in private residents. You are again being asked to consider the impact of those costs, and should, as appropriate and consistent with NRS and the scope of your authority on this matter, enter into a discussion and consideration today of that cost-benefit analysis. To aid you in your consideration on this item, we have invited East Fork Fire District Chief Todd Carlini to give some additional information and context for you today. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I will return, I will turn over my remaining time to Mr. Chief Carlini.
Absolutely. Mr. Carlini, do you have information? Sure.
For the record, Todd Carlini, District Chief, East Fork Fire Protection District. Want to thank you for allowing us the extended time today to, at least from our perspective, at least put something on the record. It is somewhat lengthy. It's going to be more of a prepared statement, so we're not going to be deviating from our points. And I'll go ahead and proceed by reading that into the record. But first, I didn't come here today thinking that I would have a flashback to five decades ago, when I had the privilege of being on a Little League All-Star team as a catcher, coming in second, only losing to the Reno Nationals. So that brought back some hard feelings about that, even 50 years later. So that was very nice, what you did today with that. The requirement for residential sprinkler, fire sprinklers, was and isn't anything new. The 2009, 12, 15, 18, and 21 additions of the International Residential Code, joined with the National Fire Protection Association's Life Safety Code and the NFPA Building Code, in requiring fire sprinkler systems being installed in all new homes. The NFPA codes have included this requirement since 2006. Inclusion of the requirement in the International Residential Code is significant, because the IRC regulates residential construction in 49 states plus the District of Columbia. Even though some states and local jurisdictions have chosen legislatively or administratively to defer the requirement, model codes establish the nationally-recognized standard of care for new home construction, and designers and builders who choose to omit sprinklers from new homes are failing to build in accordance with nationally-recognized standards. The requirements to include fire sprinklers in residential construction is not something that came about suddenly or without great deal of thought and public review. Building codes have progressively phased in fire sprinkler systems for residential occupancies over the past 20 years, beginning with hotels, condominiums, apartments, extending to include townhouses in 2000 and townhouses in 2009. All townhouses in 2009. And finally, extending to include all new homes in 2011. Fire sprinklers are already installed in hundreds of thousands of single-family homes throughout the United States, based on local regulation, and millions of families now live in properties protected by fire sprinkler systems. Performance of these systems has been outstanding, with fires typically being controlled or extinguished by a single fire sprinkler. The Douglas County Commission removed this requirement via amendment in the ordinance, which adopted the 2012 code. The requirement appears again in 2015, IRC, which is the code year that is skipped during the six-year cycle of code adoption. The 2018 IRC was amended to remove the requirement in that code once again. However, the requirement was vested to the authorities having jurisdiction under the International Fire Code with modifications, with modified requirements. So essentially, the county gave that authority to the two fire districts. The adoption of Ordinance 2019-1545 on April 4, 2019, established a requirement for residential occupancies to install fire sprinkler systems in homes less than 5,000 square feet. Specifically, if the location of the proposed occupancy was 1,000 feet from a recognized fire hydrant, meaning in an area that would have been considered served by a municipal water system, either public or private. Douglas County Community Development Director, Tom Delaire, and Assistant County Manager, Jennifer Davidson, have prepared a very detailed and accurate history of this ordinance, which is part of the record and backup. At the time the ordinance was drafted, Douglas County, represented by Building Official Dave Lundgren, worked with East Fork Fire Protection District Fire Marshal Steve Isley, and with Tahoe-Douglas Fire Protection District Fire Marshal Eric Gubine. The county's legal counsel assigned at that time was Ms. Mary Ann Martin. The drafting of the specific requirement for residential fire sprinkler system installation was well thought out with respect to the criteria that would require the systems in certain residential occupancies, mostly based on location. Those developing the criteria were sensitive to the fact that the introduction of this critical requirement would challenge most homebuilders, architects, and certainly homeowners. Certain exceptions and allowances were made in consideration of some of those challenges. The requirement to install residential fire sprinkler systems did not discriminate between conventional construction and manufactured housing, and those lives that are intended, the lives they are intended to protect. On July 1, 2019, the requirement was implemented. For the purposes of this presentation and the position of the East Fork Fire Protection District, our discussion will be related to our jurisdiction and not in any way represent a position of the Tahoe-Douglas Fire Protection District. I am not sure if they're going to be here today. In my opinion, the analytics of this requirement should be a consideration in any decision or in the discussion. We have since revised our data by hand-counting of data available between our Plan Review System and that of the Douglas County Building Department. Since its implementation, the fire district has conducted 1,129 sprinkler audits. The audits determine whether a system is required. Of those 129 audits, 100 were for homes within developments where the HOA or a development agreement has imposed the fire sprinkler requirement. We have two developments within the fire district who realize the benefit of the systems and require the installation, long before Douglas County ordinance imposed the current requirement. Those include Jobe's Peak Ranch and Clear Creek, Tahoe. Of the remaining 1,029 audits, and based on our records, 109 homes have been required to install systems. That represents 10.5% over the three-year period. Breaking that down further, this equates to 36 residential occupancies being required to install systems each year since adoption. The monthly average is three per month over that same time period. The majority of housing construction, roughly 90%, that's taking place within the area, does not have that requirement. 90%. In 2021, the ordinance was challenged by the Nevada Housing Alliance, almost two years after its implementation. The challenge was vested under the Cost-Benefit Analysis Process. Based on this challenge, Ordinance 2021-1580 was introduced and adopted, which provided an exemption for manufactured home application. Since that time, and to our knowledge, three exemptions have been requested and approved, with the fire district recommending disapproval each time. In almost every case where a residential fire sprinkler system has been required, the location meets the very criteria contained in NRS 278-5863, where a governing body may require the installation of an automatic sprinkler system in a new residential dwelling unit that has a livable space of less than 5,000 square feet. Essentially, without the cost-benefit analysis, or making finding in a public hearing, that the unique characteristics or location of the residential unit would cause an unreasonable delay in firefighter response. In making the determination, the governing body may consider water supplies in the area, resource capabilities of the fire district, and topographic and access issues. While the East Fork Fire Protection District has numerous residential occupancies that meet these criteria, from one end of the district to the other, and across the district, generally contained between the Sierra Range and the Pineapple Mountains on the east, the ordinance, in its original form, was a positive step towards improving fire safety within the district, and more specifically, in areas where we are challenged with response times. In addition to Nevada law making provisions for the installation of residential systems, the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA 1142, provides its own criteria for evaluating the need for sprinkler systems. Under NFPA 1142, eight criteria are established relative to an agency requiring systems. They include limited fire department resources, extended fire department response time or distance, potential for delayed discovery of the fire, limited access, hazardous vegetation, structural attachments, which would include decks and porches, unusual terrain, or special uses or unusual occupancies. The authority having jurisdiction shall be permitted to specify how the water supplies required in this document are provided, given consideration to local conditions and need. The same general statement can be made, that those occupancies that have been required to install systems under the original ordinance meet the majority of the NFPA 1142 criteria listed. It is interesting to note that hazardous vegetation is one of the elements. This is an obvious reference to a home built within the urban interface. The East Fork Fire Protection District provides all risk service to 675 square miles of Douglas County, or approximately 96% of the county. We respond to 7,000 calls for service each year now, mostly emergency medical-related. A good and growing percentage of residential construction is taking place in the urban interface areas. Many of these areas and the associated response potential do challenge the district geographically. While we have certainly increased our career staffing, our volunteer firefighting capacity is diminished. Increases in emergency medical service requests can deplete our firefighting capacity at any given moment. After some retooling of our volunteer program, we are seeing some positive increases in certain areas. However, our volunteer program is now more focused on the logistical needs of an incident rather than the initial attack to a structure fire. This is especially true with structural firefighting. Our volunteer forces are charged with water delivery, incident support, and wildland fire response. The community demographic growth and arduous training and physical demands of structural firefighting outpaced volunteer capacities years ago. The residential fire sprinkler systems are designed to address five primary considerations: life safety of the occupants related to exiting, property conservation and loss control of the residents, firefighter safety, lack of water supply and fire flow, and protection of the wildland urban interface and wildland conflagration prevention. The data available demonstrates that all five primary considerations have and can be addressed and met with the installation of the residential systems. Over time, those in opposition continue to quote installation costs that appear to make the system cost prohibitive. The numbers that are represented in forums such as this seem to increase each time they're presented. The cost of construction in general has reached record-setting amounts here in Douglas County and within the region, yet I find it odd that the only element of construction that is singled out is the fire sprinkler system. Nothing seems to change. As a As a graduate student in the College of Architecture and Urban Planning at the University of Utah, in the winter quarter of 1981, I wrote a paper on fire sprinkler systems in general, more so for commercial, institutional, and industrial occupancies. Lo and behold, that cost was used as an issue then to discredit the installation of systems. That was 41 years ago. Our data, which is based on actual submittals of costs by licensed sprinkler system contractors and as part of their required planned submissions for review, indicate an average that the systems are costing between $3 and $5 per square foot for residential installations. One of the most recent reviews that was conducted was on July 28th, 2022. The residence contained 3,168 square feet. The declared cost of installation was $14,450, yielding a total cost per square foot $4.56. One year ago, in an article that appeared in the Record Courier, Nevada Board of Realtors President Brad Spires said, "Strong demand in the housing market and lack of inventory are driving prices up." He said that the median price per square foot was $326. I think it's probably more than that a year later. Based on our documented cost submission and applying the $326 a square foot cost, the installation of a fire sprinkler system represents approximately 1% of the cost per square foot. We venture a guess that the cost of a manufactured home is even less due to the inherent manufacturing processes that reduce the overall cost when the home is manufactured under controlled conditions in a factory. When this cost is distributed into a 30- or a 15-year mortgage, the impact is even less in our opinion. Please remember, 90% of the homes being built in this jurisdiction are not requiring a The point needs to be made, and the question asked of development, why are there not efforts to repeal the various construction requirements that provide for occupant safety related to earthquakes, snow loads, wind shear, electrical hazards, mechanical systems, structural stability, foundations, and in some cases ADA requirements? All of the building systems are designed for the safety of the occupants and even the safety of first responders in some cases, such as emergency disconnects for solar system installations, yet add cost to the construction. Many of these systems saw code revisions over the years with the adoption of the various codes. All, I am sure, have added to the cost of construction. The discussion regarding the systems has also allowed for comparisons to be made with other jurisdictions within the region. Currently, there are two jurisdictions which require systems in occupancies less than 5,000 square feet regionally: Douglas County and Story County. Carson City, Central Lion County, and agencies within Washoe County all require systems in occupancies greater than 5,000 square feet until the requirement of the Urban Interface Code put requirements on water supply greater than 1,000 feet from a fire hydrant. The Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District used to have a very similar requirement to ours for occupancies that were less than 5,000 square feet. NRS 244 provides that Nevada counties can address matters of concerns. This includes matters of public health, safety, and welfare. I'm certainly not an attorney, but the fact that Douglas County has the ability to act independent of what other jurisdictions may do or have or impose are testament to the argument that differences between jurisdictions and counties do exist and not relevant to the argument of who has one and who does not. This is specifically reinforced under NRS 244.105, which covers the procedure for the enactment of special uniform codes, Section C, and states that any portion such a code may adopt by reference with such changes as may be necessary to make it applicable to the conditions in the county and with other changes as may be desired. Emphasis should be placed on NRS 244.675, where the regulations adopted by the state fire marshal under NRS 477.030 cannot be ignored. The regulation and our interlocal agreement with the state fire marshal under NRS 477 gives East Fork Fire Protection District the ability and responsibility to enforce all codes adopted by NAC 477. So this becomes relevant when fire flow is considered. Each county is different, as are the various agencies within each county. The need for a more restrictive requirement for residential sprinkler systems in Carson City may not be valid due to the size of the jurisdiction and response times. In Washoe County, the fire response capacity and resource capacity of the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District is nearly double that of East Fork. Where they staff two full battalions per day, we are only able to staff one. They also don't have the demands of interfacility ambulance transfers that occur here in East Fork and with each one reduce our firefighting capacity by 8.6% based on current staffing models. Within Douglas County, under the proposed ordinance, two different requirements will now be established whereby residential occupancies within the Tahoe Douglas Fire Protection District require all new residential structures to have a fire sprinkler system installed and any new remodels or additions greater than 3,600 square feet will be required to have systems installed, while the number limitation within East Fork's jurisdiction would be set at 5,000 square feet. My point is that each county or agency will have a need to address, different need to address, in this case, a public safety issue differently. If it were a matter of simply adopting a code because neighboring jurisdictions had done so, such as the adoption of the Urban Interface Code, Douglas County should be adopting this as soon as possible inasmuch as the East Fork Fire Protection District is the only agency regionally that has not adopted this code. The requirements vested with the code will easily rival and probably exceed those associated with the residential sprinkler requirement and will impact 100% of the new home construction built within the established interface zones. In the matter of firefighter safety, and as someone who has been in the fire service in Nevada for over 45 years, both as a volunteer and a career member, firefighter safety is not just a catchphrase that is used to evoke emotion. It is very real concern. I know that as a board of county commissioners, you take the safety and welfare of all public safety personnel very seriously with respect to the jobs and risks that exist. You all demonstrated that over time, and certainly I was witness to that commitment last year with last year's Tamarack Fire and your collective concern for all involved in the response. Three of you personally conveyed that concern to me, and it was appreciated. However, firefighter safety is important with respect to this ordinance. With our geography, response times, and lack of water supplies within these areas, our personnel are arriving at fires at a very dangerous time. Fire propagation within these residents becomes a ticking time bomb for the fire personnel arriving at draft conditions or The residential fire sprinkler system can contain interior fires by time for extended response and not subject firefighters to those more dangerous situations. While it is recognized that we have hundreds of residential occupancies that won't ever have to have a fire sprinkler system and under the same response challenges, this ordinance was a very good starting point with respect to all five of the priority reasons I have noted and towards a more fire-resilient county. The application of the residential fire sprinkler code or systems in those areas where required has allowed the district to have significant latitude with regard to fire flow and water supplies as defined by the International Fire Code, the International Wildlife Interface Code, and the International Residential Code, as it relates to fire flow. Regardless of having a spring incident, irrespective of where the requirement resides, it must be considered. The state fire marshal has jurisdiction authority in 14 of the 17 Nevada counties. The East Fork Fire Protection District has had an interlocal agreement with the state fire marshal for over 25 years and in fact was the first entity in the state to enact that agreement. Under our current interlocal agreement with the state fire marshal, the district is obligated to enforce all codes and regulations as required by the state under NRS 477 and as adopted by the state under NAC 477 and apply those within Douglas County. This would include requirements for fire flow. The state has opted to allow each jurisdiction the authority over residential fire sprinkler systems. While residential fire sprinkler systems would have had little effect on the devastation caused in last year's Tamarack Fire, they do have a significant impact on the fire that starts within a structure built within these areas. By suppressing the fire, the system keeps fires small from consuming the entire home and the very high potential of spread into adjacent interface areas. Case studies support this statement. In our own jurisdiction alone and during the course of my career, we have seen residential structure fires spread to the interface and surrounding areas. Fire spread can occur with direct heat impingement or through ember wash. As we all know, wildland fire growth is exponential once adjacent fuel is ignited. Just as NRS 244 affords counties the Opportunity Act rules and regulations it sees necessary to address specific issues within the county and within the confines of Dillon's rule, NRS 474 not only allows the fire district the opportunity to adopt regulations and enabling language, but it can be interpreted in such a way as it actually requires the district to do this. For the administration of government of the district and for the furnishing of fire protection thereto, which may include regulations related to fire prevention. The East Fork Fire Protection District Board of Directors at their July 19th, 2022 meeting directed administration to develop regulations within the authority of the fire district for adoption regarding sprinkler systems in residential construction that meet the needs that this district has to have in order to provide life safety, fire protection, and property preservation. This is verbatim of the motion that was passed with a 5-0 vote. The matter was properly agendized and included as part of the meeting related to communications with Douglas County regarding the proceedings today. The district and the county did work together to produce an alternative to today's proposal, which did fully exempt manufactured housing inasmuch as the current ordinance provides for exemption process, and also provided for an exemption to those who suffer property loss due to an act of nature or criminal act, provided that they sign exemption documents and insurance disclosures. On July 19th, 2022, the Record Courier posted an editorial discussing the sprinkler requirement in a very articulate and accurate way explaining the reasons for the requirement. They also reported that a compromise had been reached between the district and the county. I cannot speak to the reasons that that proposal was not acted on nor where any received this information. They stated, however, what they stated, however, was factual. We did work with Douglas County Community Development, did come to a compromise. The editorial also noted, "When Douglas County was approving its Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution, Commissioner Wes Rice pointed out that having a gun in the house is a lot faster when there's trouble than waiting for deputies to arrive." The editorial went on to say, "That's what the sprinklers are for. They are a lot faster than the fire department when a fire breaks out in your home. And if that happens to be up in the trees, it also helps keep your house from spreading to the surrounding wildland and maybe give firefighters time to save your neighbors' homes." I'm not putting Commissioner Rice on the spot. I have the utmost respect for his public safety career in law enforcement. Rather, the analogy that is made between defending one's property by having a gun in the house when you need law enforcement reinforces the same response challenges that our partners in law enforcement have due to the same geographical challenges and extended response times we have to fires in some areas, namely those where fire sprinkler systems are generally being required. Just over a year ago, both the district and the county worked together, supported each other, had both governing bodies attend daily briefings, saw public safety personnel form up into one team regardless of who they worked for, that addressed firefighting, evacuation, security, sheltering, incident logistics, damage assessment, repopulation, and recovery to the best of our ability. We saw church groups, charitable organizations, volunteer organizations, service clubs, businesses, and members of this community all come together to support the cause that the Tamarack Fire gave rise to. Assistant County Manager Jennifer Davidson and I made the difficult personal contacts with the residents who suffered losses in the fire. We did that together. The district is not attempting to circumvent the county's authority with the direction that has been provided to its administration. We are more so attempting to fulfill the requirement of our enabling legislation. In some regards, this may really be an issue for the fire districts to address rather than the county. East Fork and Tahoe Douglas, as a matter of fact, are the agency who by law are charged with fire protection. One could argue that the county does not have that responsibility. Maybe this requirement and the associated issues it seems to be generating would be best passed to the fire district. A second editorial in the Record Courier published yesterday makes this same case. I want to thank the Douglas County Commission and staff for allowing for this extended opportunity to make this presentation. I'm prepared to answer questions. I have some folks here that could answer some technical questions if they may arise. We have just one visual that we want to put up, and that'll conclude our presentation.
What we're showing here, and this was part of our effort and our hand count, this is showing where those 10% homes are that require sprinkler systems. You can see by the red dots with the little fire engine in them, that's where our paid stations are, that's where the structural firefighting response is going to come from. They don't show up as well as I had hoped, but you can also see where our volunteer stations are located. There's one right there and up in Fish Springs, you can see that. Ruin Stra is on there, Station 2 in Gardinerville. That's where we carry our water, that's where our water tenders are stored or housed. But you can see in these, by this picture here, most of these are being required in areas outside of municipal water systems. And certainly, the vast majority of them are in the interface areas where we have, you know, that significant risk. And so, and certainly the delayed response times. So, you know, we have a standard to cover that we try to meet. We try to get the first engine there with a crew of three with 750 gallons of water. We try to get it there and within eight minutes, 90% of the time. The balance of that alarm, we try to get there within 12 minutes, 90% of the time. We're starting to reevaluate that based on our last couple of years' data, but what we're finding getting in the way is the increase in calls. So for every time we have an extra call, we're losing firefighting capacity in some regard. And that's, I think, I would venture to guess, I think law enforcement could probably make that same statement about increasing service requests because our county's growing. So, that's really all I have. Once again, I appreciate the opportunity to have an extended period of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlini. We appreciate the opportunity to visit with you and have this written to the record. We would We would also ask you to go ahead and give copy to our clerk to, okay, very good. Commissioners, are there any questions of Mr. Carlini before he leaves the microphone? Commissioner Ingles?
Chief Carlini, cannot manufactured homes be manufactured with pre-installed sprinkler systems?
It's my understanding that that is what they in fact do. Yes, sir.
And do any other counties get the zephyrs like we do in the afternoon?
I would say that that's probably a circumstance that happens across the entire Sierra front. So I would say everything from Alpine County, probably all the way into Washoe County, that definitely has been a situation that I know I've witnessed during that same, through that same area in the course of my career. Yes, sir.
It's pretty broad-based in northern Nevada, in the Sierra region. Further east, maybe not, but.
Probably not. We have the impact, we refer those to down slope winds. It's almost, you could set your watch generally to around 2:30, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and it's mainly because of the geography and the terrain of the Sierra Mountains.
Basically, this ordinance is in existence now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what this agenda item is proposing is to undo that ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. No further questions.
Commissioner Turkanyan?
Fire Marshal Carlini, I had a really nice conversation with two of your representatives yesterday. They answered most of my questions, but there's two of them I didn't either remember or we didn't get to, so maybe you could help me with them. You mentioned the compromise that you had made with the county staff on this issue, and the compromise was our first reading of this matter before, correct? Where you'd exempt out manufactured homes and homes destroyed by natural disasters?
That's, that's correct.
So I guess my question is, why would those homes be less at risk at fire damage, risk to the owners, or risk to the firemen than a new home being built that's under 5,000 square feet?
The recommendation for the exemption for manufactured housing was not vested with the fire district making that decision. I think that was relative to the case that the manufactured housing folks had brought forth to the county relative to the inadequacies of the cost benefit analysis. And, you know, I think that's a discussion that you would probably have to have. I would have to pass that to your legal counsel.
Well, no, my question, I'm just trying to.
Because you're correct, there is no difference. That's why, you know, we actually made note of that. There should be no discrimination in our view.
Okay, so this is the point, we're trying to figure out a cost benefit analysis here, and you did a very nice job explaining what the benefit is, but there's certain things that just don't correlate with me, and I wanted to see if you could maybe explain that. So if you're willing to allow manufactured homes not to have sprinklers, to, you know, this compromise, but not allow the new homes under 5,000 square feet, which basically are the same at risk, it sort of doesn't correlate with one another. But there's even a bigger one to me, and I know why this was made, because Commissioner Gardner, and rightfully so, has had concerns over people in his district who lost their homes during the Tamarack Fire. So the second part of that compromise would allow newly-built homes destroyed by natural disasters not to have fire sprinklers. How are they any less dangerous to the firemen, the occupants, or the building itself than a newly-built home?
The approach with that would be, the requirement would still be in place for them to take advantage of. If they opted not to take advantage, they would have to sign over some sort of disclosure and certainly advise their insurance companies that they were waiving that opportunity. It's a tough situation, and sometimes, you know, maybe you end up relying on emotion when you have to deal with a situation where people have such losses. And, you know, we want to encourage or be able to encourage people to try to put their lives together, and in many cases, that land that they have out there is probably all they have right now. And.
No, I don't mean to cut you off, but I wanted to try to streamline this. I understand the reason why, and I've mentioned that. I mean, these are people that have, I mean, every one of us feels devastated for their losses and understand the reasoning why. I would, I'd vote in a second to have that done. What I'm trying to understand is why is it more dangerous, I mean, more dangerous for a new home to say why we shouldn't give the same ability to someone in a new home who maybe can't afford these additional fire sprinklers? And I know I met with your staff and they, and they went through some of the same numbers you did of the cost, and then I've had conversations with developers who tell me, no, this is the cost. It goes back and forth, and there's other things in there. You got to be pretty good in building homes to understand what all the costs are. But, you know, a big concern for this county has always been, or has been since I've been on the board, the affordable housing issue and making, yeah, it's so hard to do in today's environment. You mentioned the cost of a regular home, it's crazy. And who would have thought it would be this high? And I'm sure it's going to drop pretty quickly with the, with things going on with the economy, but those things are really beyond their control. I guess what we're trying to do is, things that are within our control, do you add an additional cost that I've heard is upwards to $40,000 a home, you've had a lot less, based upon the benefit of the safety it's going to provide? So I'm just trying to understand the safety. If it's not a big safety issue for manufactured homes or homes destroyed by a natural fire, then maybe it's not quite enough of a benefit to a new home builder who can't afford it. That's just my one point of it. There's a lot of them. So that was the first question I had. Second one was, and again, going back to the cost benefit analysis, before this ordinance was changed in 2019, because that's what it was, Commissioner Engel, the ordinance was the way we're voting on now before 2019, then it was changed. Before 2019, what issues, what examples, how many, when, I mean, did a home get destroyed because they, under 5,000 square feet, that didn't have a fire sprinkler system, or that someone was injured or died, or a fireman was injured or died, the three concerns that we have? How often did this happen, if at all? Because I asked you two representatives, and they couldn't come up with an example before 2019 when this, when this ordinance was changed?
Well, fortunately, I'm not going to be able to come up to a specific example short of a situation that happened in Johnson Lane that was in the 90s, where fire personnel arrived at the home, but at the same time it decided to explode, and several were transported to hospitals. And so we have had that experience, but it's, you know, thank God, it is not something that we've experienced, you know, in recent times or as it might be associated with this ordinance.
Okay, and final, and I don't mean to be snarky on this, but I like the analogy you made about the gun, and it certainly would stop somebody quicker because you have it there. But each person, I mean, there's no ordinance in Gardinerville or Douglas County that requires a gun in your home.
That's correct.
What this ordinance does requires a sprinkler system. Anybody who owns a home, buys a home under 5,000 square feet, they could ask for the sprinkler system if it's a newly-built home, being built, or remodel, or if they get the manufactured homes, they could ask the manufacturer to install them. They have the option. So we're basically saying, should we force them to do this because government knows best for them, when we don't know what their pocketbook issues are? Or should we give them that opportunity to basically own a gun to protect themselves in case a robber comes in? I was, no, I'm done.
Thank you. I want to ask Mr. Rice if he had any comments at this time, and then we'll come back. Mr. Engle?
I'm not a shill for the NRA, honest. But 57 years in law enforcement, I used to have a saying, when seconds count, the police are only minutes away. And that's sad but true, because there were many cases throughout my career that one more minute could have made a difference. However, we require smoke alarms, we require carbon monoxide alarms. It would seem to me that unless you have the foolish decision to remove the batteries from your alarm so that your kids can play their game, that's on you. And now they are building the smoke alarms and the carbon monoxide alarms foolproof in that you can't take the damn battery out and it's good for 10 years. So things are progressing. The building materials that we have now are better than they used to be. We have the ability to make our house fire resistant. Nothing's fireproof, any more than anything is burglar proof. But I think that it's up to the responsibility of the individual homeowners to protect themselves in the level of protection that they want. I hate dictating to people how they have to live their lives, and that's my problem with this ordinance.
Mr. Engle, if you had additional questions?
I don't think it's a fair analogy to compare having a weapon in the house to a sprinkler system that you can amortize over 20 or 30 years with the installation being done with the mortgage in the home. And this seems to be the primary item of contention in regard to this whole sprinkler system thing is the cost. And building materials have improved and a lot of all of these other things, well, it's an additional safety factor, because it's my understanding that a lot of times, it's not the house structure itself, it's the material inside the house that can catch on fire, it's synthetic, and it burns. Is this true, something you're contending with today that perhaps wasn't the same years ago? Is that true?
Very true, very true.
Now, there's, there's other ways to deal with this, but I'm of the persuasion that this ordinance should stay in effect, might, should be revisited to not only include stick-built homes, but also manufactured homes. It's got to be fair for everybody. And these things didn't exist in the past, but now they are available, and these are more safety items that do save lives. So, once again, if you amortize the cost of a sprinkler system over the life of the mortgage with the home, that it's really not all that much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engle. So you mentioned several things, and I leaned on to those. The Tamarack Fire that occurred in our county really had nothing to do with fire sprinklers. And quite frankly, and we have many of those homeowners with us today that are in this audience, I noticed them, because that was in my particular district, and I know many of them, and in fact, go to church with several of them. Nothing, nothing, I don't care how, if they had had a fire hydrant in their front living room, would have prevented the loss of those 12 homes. As a matter of fact, there was a fire suppression system that was in one of the garages, I'm sure we'll probably hear about that later during public comment, where a fire suppression system was installed, and still the homeowner lost nearly a million dollars worth of cars, antique cars. So one of the hazards, of course, we enter into is that one of the, and rightfully so, I'll put it this way, rightfully so, one of the first things in a fire, certainly a wildland fire, that occurs is the energy company powers down. And that's to not only help mitigate any possibilities of firefighters themselves from encountering live wires that are on the ground, but also to try to attempt to encourage our homeowners to get out of the area as well. No amount of fire suppression systems would have saved the 12 homes that we lost down there. Where I really struggle, of course, and we've had this discussion, is the fact that on Victory Circle, where there were five homes, we only lost one. But as that homeowner now tries to rebuild that home, he of the five is required to put in fire sprinklers. And so that's where I struggle with this particular ordinance. You and I, Mr. Carlini, had a conversation along with Commissioner Rice and our county manager several months ago in your department, talking about the wildland urban interface. And so I encouraged your department to look at where, within our county, certain aspects of the wooie would be applicable, and if I'm not mistaken, we have the opportunity to address and authorize certain portions of the wooie without authorizing all of them within our county. And I still think that that's an important conversation to have with this board on where we might want to institute the certain aspects of the wooie in our county to help us out. And that, a lot of that includes, as Mr. Engle was saying, building materials themselves. Certainly, the wooie is not designed, as I understand it, to necessarily protect a house fire from going outside the house and starting a wildfire, but otherwise mitigate the amount of time that it takes for a wildfire to burn the actual structure. But these fires are moving so rapidly through our neighborhoods, the wildland fires, that some of the neighborhoods that we had encountered, certainly in South County, and I believe one of the fires that we encountered out in the, out our way area, deep into Fish Springs, there was just no amount of fire suppression that could have possibly prevented the loss of those structures. So anyways, I think you made a very good case, and I appreciate the information. If the commissioners don't have any other questions, Mr. Engle?
Chief Carlini, you may be familiar with this. I'm not. It's my understanding that the entire Clear Creek development is sprinkled. Do you have any knowledge about that?
That is correct. They, in their HOA or the confines in which they allow, have some authority over what's built, they do require sprinklers. The second point is, quite a few of the homes up there far exceed the 5,000 square foot requirement, and even without their own requirement, quite a few of those homes would fall under the existing ordinance or even what is being proposed, they would still be required.
Thank you.
And I would concur with that. You know, where certain communities and HOAs determine that they, you know, need to do that, then that should be the, in my opinion, the auspices or within the auspices of that HOA and what they require in their community. So is there any additional public comment, or is there any additional comments that the board has for staff? No? Okay. Then it's been requested that we take a quick break before we get into public comment. So at this time, I'm going to call a recess until 12 o'clock noon. My computer says 11:46, so 12 o'clock noon to give the commissioners and the public opportunity to use the facilities, and we'll be back at noon, and we'll entertain public comment at that time. Thank you.
Recording.
Okay, it is noon and so.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. All four commissioners that are present today are back in attendance. So anyways, we will resume item 12 and Mr. Delair, did you have anything more to offer at this time or before we go to public comment?
Thank you Chairman Gardner. I do only one thing is that we do have, not pretending, Todd did a really good job at his presentation, but we have two manufactured home fire sprinkler waivers waiting to be heard by this board. We were holding them off pending today's conversation. So I just wanted you guys to be aware. He mentioned there were three. We have two additional ones to process if, you know, depending on what happens today.
Thank you. So at this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Once again, I would ask that members of the public, please silence your personal electronic devices. If you wish to offer public comment, each individual have an opportunity to do so for three minutes. You will see a green light when you begin, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and then a red light will indicate that your time has expired and we ask you to then sit down. When you approach the podium, we have a sign-in sheet on that podium. So we ask you to print your name so that we can get it accurately into the minutes and then state your name. So at this time, we will open public comment for those here in chambers. Does anybody wish to offer public comment at this time? And if we can, if there's several members of you that wish to offer public comment, we would ask you to perhaps line up on the wall so that we can get through this as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Hi, Patty Graff. I would like to answer Mr. Tarkanian's question on the manufactured homes, the HUD homes. I'm in the process of doing one right now. They have the wooey package. I'm spending $35,000 for a 2,000 square foot home which has fire resistant roofing, siding, and under, you know, like subflooring in there. It also has all the other fire, you know, safety features in there, carbon monoxide alarms, smoke alarms, GFI switches, everything. So just to answer the question on that, also directing with what the fire chief said, 40 years ago and even the 1990s, they didn't have the materials of fire resistant that they do today. Even a lot of the couches, personal items that people put in a home, they're fire resistant. So it's not like a lot of things are going to go, you know, get torched right away compared to what it did in the past. I think that the cost of the sprinkler system, it's like if I have to put that in, why do the wooey package? Because the cost is going to be that. If the cost was only 1%, I'm spending almost $400,000 on this manufactured home. That's $4,000. You can't even get a generator for $4,000 because if the power's shut off, you're not going to have water. I think it's great that like homeowners associations where there are larger homes are asking to put the sprinklers in, but I don't think it's worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, for the record, my name is Susan Fisher. I'm with McDonald Corono and I represent the Nevada Housing Alliance, which is a statewide association made up of manufactured home dealers and related vendors. With all due respect to the fire chief, I would like to correct some of the things that were put on the record. Their cost analysis is way low. What we have, we had supplied a little over a year ago to your board, actual quotes from the manufacturers, from the factories, on what the sprinklers cost, and it's in the range of $30,000 to $40,000, a lot more than what was put on the record earlier. And with regard to the, when they are put in at the factory as well, not all factories are installing them anymore. In fact, we had also supplied a letter to this board a little over a year ago from one factory that said they're no longer going to even install the sprinkler packages in any of the homes, even if the person wanted them. So to get it done after the fact is going to be a lot more expensive if you can find somebody to do it. We appreciate very much the consideration that you gave to us earlier when, when you did allow for the waiver process and then also the revision for the manufactured homes. We just don't want to see that go backwards with the exemption for the manufactured homes or homes that are destroyed by fire. It's, these are homes that help people get into homeownership the first time, a lot of the time. And affordability is super important, especially at this time. So we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Don Hudson. I live out in Holbrook Highlands, but I wanted to talk about something that John, Commissioner Engels, said. The average person lives in a home about seven years before they move along. Okay? So amortizing these sprinklers over 30 years is in fact not realistic. And that's all I've got.
Good morning. Lindsay Knox with McDonald Corono, representing the Builders Association of Northern Nevada. I want to thank all the commissioners for hearing this today. In regards to it being over the 30-year mortgage, that's not what people look at when they're buying a home. It is that front cost. And for every $1,000 a house increases, you're looking at 1,600 people not being able to purchase that home. And that is at the starting price of 349,000. So imagine what that number is now with our median housing price. That includes the lumber, that includes our fees for permits. So before you even turn a shovel, you're looking at $65,000 a door just based off of fees and that land cost. So all of that goes into what the home price is, and that is what people are looking at when they are buying a new home. Yes, fire sprinklers, they do have a purpose, but they are going to increase that to impact our teachers, our public safety folks, our nurses, from being able to purchase homes in this community, which has been a problem for quite a few years now. So we support this effort in this ordinance and we thank you all for hearing
Okay, there we go. Hi, my name is Richard Pike. I wanted to talk a little bit about what Commissioner Rice was talking about with the smoke detectors. When the power goes out, what happens with the sprinklers? Okay, we're on wells and the power goes out, we lose all power to our wells and everything. Smoke detectors have a backup system with a 9-volt battery. That's very simple to do. And to me, that is a good warning device as far as being able to exit the home or dwelling. What happens with the sprinkler system when the power goes out? I think they have some sort of a system to spray water for a certain amount of time, but that's probably not going to be enough time for anybody to do anything or exit the property. The cost, here we go again with the money part of it, but the cost for people on wells, now you have to have a backup generator, you have to have storage tanks, you have to have pressure systems that are available to handle the pressure that a sprinkler system takes to maintain. And this is, as far as the return on investment, it's way outrageous. So anyway, that's.
My name is Morgan Butterfield. Good day, Commissioners. I am a concerned citizen of Douglas County. My family and I are trying to buy a home. However, the costs are high. Adding the cost of a sprinkler system is not an item I want to pay for. There is a fire, if there's a fire in my home, I have a window or door in every room that I can use to escape the home, and I have a smoke detector in every room that alerts me to get out. I support having sprinklers in the larger homes that are 5,000 square feet or bigger, as that makes sense. I do not support or think it's a good idea or fair to those who are not near a fire hydrant to have a sprinkler system. Please vote to amend our code only to only require homes larger than 5,000 square feet to have fire sprinklers.
Is that on? Ready?
Yeah.
My name's Steve Crabtree. My main concern is the cost of the sprinkler systems in relationship to the benefit. It's fine when you've got a home that's Clear Creek at $3 million, maybe average value, and you're looking at sprinkler system installation there that may well be 1% of the cost of the property. But it's not the case when you're like me and you're looking at a $200,000 manufactured home and you're looking at a total of maybe $40,000 to put the sprinkler system in. About half of it from the factory and about half of it, the installation itself after the manufactured home is delivered and set up. We're on a private well, and that's expensive to get that system hooked up. I'm also concerned that the ongoing cost, inspections, maintenance, testing, that goes on over a period of time with a system. You don't just put one in and leave it alone. It costs to have that system maintained over time. I think that about does it. Everything else I had to say has already been covered today, so I won't take any more time. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's not required you take the entire three minutes, so we appreciate that.
My name, my name's Ty Atwater. We're trying to, right now, we're in the process of trying to get a stick-built house put back on our property or a manufactured home. The price of the sprinkler system is pretty much eliminating the stick-built house. So what I'm more concerned about is the accidental discharges of sprinkler systems. October 4th, this last October 4th, one just went off in the Douglas County Library. It's not just water that comes out, it's biohazard water. So you don't just have water to clean up, you've got a biohazard to clean up. That's what I'm concerned about. In 2014, one, over 30, the fire departments across the United States, they responded to over 33,000 accidental discharges of sprinkler systems. So that's what I'm concerned about. I'm more concerned about the sprinkler system going off than I am another fire. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jim Elsmore. I'm a Douglas County property owner here and I just, I've heard a lot today and I've, I support the adoption of the new ordinance to go back to the old way with the sprinklers, I think, requirements. I think it'll, it'll help more of the constituents have more home affordability in the area. Thank you.
I have a, had a 5,000 square foot garage.
Excuse me, Mr., could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm Jerry Vandenberg. I'm sorry. In this 5,000 square foot shop garage that I had, I had nine antique, classic, and customers, custom cars worth close to $1 million. I had a sprinkler system in my garage, in my shop. It did not work because we had no water supply because we had no electricity to pump it. That is where we're at on that. Our house burnt in less than five minutes. That's two more minutes than when I'm allowed to speak here. Now I have one question to ask. These fire individuals here, they're so strong on this sprinkler system. May I ask them, do you have sprinklers in your house? Am I getting, oh, we have one?
Mr. Vandenberg, we're not, we can't get into the back and forth dialogue with the other members of the public here.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Mark.
I, I'm, go ahead, Ms. Elges.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apology. I just think they're so strong on it. So, but that's really all I got to say. Everybody else has really informed all the problems. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Hi, my name is William Scully and I escaped from California because we had unelected bureaucrats creating all this problem. I think it should be just like a gun. You can either vote to have one in your home or you have the option of not. And all I want is freedom. I want people to leave me alone. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment here in chambers? Seeing none, Ms. Elges, is there a public comment online?
Eric, are you there?
I'm going to go ahead and give this a try. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Fire Marshal Gavon for the record, Tahoe Douglas Fire Protection District. I thank you Commissioners for your time. Thank you to the public. I understand this is a very emotionally charged topic. Chief Carlini articulated very well the need for sprinkler systems and, and I just wanted to say, we support him as a fire district in his stance on the sprinkler systems. We are a partnering agency and our firefighters would be at risk if these fires get out of control. I think it's really important to know, note that one of the points that was made, that the call volume that we're seeing and our resource drawdown, we a lot of times don't have the resources to respond to multiple fires going on at the same time. So that's an issue when both of our fire districts are growing with special events and other things that require much more staffing. So the impact could be great to the community as far as the needs for fire response and the cost that it takes to provide the necessary manpower to put these fires out. Obviously, the issues for us at Tahoe are the terrain, the water supply, and the snow. In your wisdom, the Commissioners have agreed to keep sprinkler systems in the Tahoe Douglas, the Lake Tahoe area. So we very much appreciate that. Fire doesn't discriminate. It's an equal opportunity killer. It would kill any individual in any home. So it doesn't matter the type of home. The trailers, the manufactured homes, as they like to be called, are usually a lightweight construction. They burn very fast. We had recently lost a life in Tahoe Douglas where the lady fell asleep. She had something on the stove and she was overcome by the smoke from the fire. And the Sheriff's Department was able to go inside, drag her to safety, but unfortunately, she succumbed to the smoke inhalation and we lost the home and her life. That's the importance of these sprinkler systems. They're life safety systems. Fires kill, and it's important to know that. We, we, we look out for the public safety. We make sure our cars have airbags and seat belts in them to protect the public. So that does cause the cost to the cars, but it protects us all and keeps us all safe on our roadways. So that's my, that's what I'd like to say. The cost-benefit analysis, there's a trade-off. Did you get insurance breaks? It is a life safety system. So the individuals that state that they.
Ms. Elges, is there any additional? I'm sorry, Mr. Gavon, you exceeded your time. Are there any other public comments online?
There is no further public comment on this item at this time.
Okay. I'm going to bring it back to the board. I, I did have a couple of observations and comments that I wanted to make. I agree with the analysis that while having a gun in a home and preventing somebody from intruding on your home, that is an option according to this ordinance. Sprinklers are not. By no means should this ordinance pass, that doesn't prevent a homeowner, to my understanding, of opting to put in fire sprinklers in their home. Mr. Delair, could you, it doesn't prevent them from doing so, it just says that they don't have to. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. So my personal opinion is, is that that fire sprinkler should be an option and if an individual wants to put them in, then certainly they should have that right and privileged of doing so. I still can, am concerned about the affordability, especially, you know, yes, it can be amortized over 30 years, but when a mortgage lender goes, when you go before a mortgage lender, they have to look at the ability of the homeowner to pay that mortgage with all the options that are included in that mortgage. And that would be fire sprinklers as well. And sometimes that might price folks out of the market. So that's a concern of mine. So I just think that this is something that should be decided between the home builder, the mortgage lender, and the fire insurance carrier as an optional opportunity and not affect the affordability of a home in our community. So those, that's just my take on that. So anyways, Commissioners, do you have any, any other observations to make before we entertain a vote? Commissioner Engels?
If this is eliminated, do we have any other ordinances in regard to any types of structures requiring sprinklers or is it just open season? I'm going to direct this to, well, either Chief Carlini or Tom Delair.
I think, I think what Mr. Engels, if I might paraphrase, what you're talking about is commercial buildings or other buildings.
No, what I'm talking about is multifamily developments or apartment buildings.
Tom Delair for the record, Community Development Director. Yes, sir, Chairman, Member Engels, we have any, any unit, I guess it's over three residential units would require be a commercial application at that point. And depending on the size of the building, no, I think it actually requires it, I'm positive, it actually requires the fire sprinklers in an apartment complex if, with a, in a manufacturer, or in a multifamily residential
One of the things that I'm curious about is, you know, here, this is an international fire code that's established by professionals. We accept it in the county and now we're going to undo it. I don't quite understand what the, what the rationale is behind that or how that happened. I can understand the cost factor. I don't understand why that maybe wasn't taken in account when this code, the International Fire Code was established. These guys should know what they're talking about if they're establishing an International Fire Code, especially in regard to the wooey. I think this came about, there was a big fire up in Marshall County a few years back that really hammered a lot of the community. And that's when the, it's Marshall County that adopted this, did they not, Chief Carlini? Do you recall that one? It was, it was a big fire up there. Marshall County has adopted the International Fire Code for the wooey, haven't they?
Amy Ray, East Fork Fire Protection District Fire Marshal for the record. I'm sorry, what is your question?
A few years back, there was a major fire in Marshall County somewhere. It was a big one. And then Marshall County adopted the interface fire codes for the wooey. Is that correct?
Yes, Marshall County did have requirements for the Wildland Urban Interface Code.
Is that similar to what we're looking at here? Do you know offhand?
No, the state Fire Marshal has adopted the International Wildland Urban Interface Code, but. Code, but Douglas County has not.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tarkanian.
I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Ingles' question, if I may, thank you. Just to elaborate a little bit on Mr. Delair's comments, just so it's clear for Commissioner Ingles, if you adopt this, if you adopt this today, it will, in addition to multifamily, would also require sprinklers on homes over 5,000 square feet, which would be consistent with the vast majority of jurisdictions in Northern Nevada. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness.
Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Specifically, Washoe County adopted ordinance number 1650 in 2020. They adopted provisions of the 2018 International Fire Code and the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. However, they had their own modifications to that. So Washoe County did adopt those provisions with their own modifications. And that occurred again in 2020. I can give you the specific date. Give me one second. August 25th, 20, 20, sorry, May 22nd, 2020.
So I'll get back, get over to you in just a second, though. So, but this has nothing to do with the WUI. I mean, as I indicated earlier, we can adopt, we can look at the WUI as a board and adopt whatever sections of the WUI that we feel and deem applicable to our county and the areas within our county without the entire county. But that would be a further action of this board at some later date. Is that right? All we're specifically talking about is, is fire sprinklers here.
Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. That's correct. However, part of WUI involves fire sprinklers as well. I mean, there's portions of the code that adopt fire sprinklers as far as the wild, the
However, I want to go back to clarification with that. Should this board entertain the idea of looking at the WUI, we're not required to adopt all sections of the WUI and we're not required to adopt the fire sprinkler aspects of the WUI. Is that, is that correct? We can cherry pick whatever aspects of the WUI that we deem are important to our county.
Yes, Chairman. Sorry, Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Yes, that is, that is correct.
That's what I understood. Okay. Commissioner Tarkanian, you had another question?
I was just gonna make a clarification on the answer to Commissioner Gardner, I mean, Commissioner Ingles, maybe a clarification. Douglas County didn't adopt the International Fire Code. The Nevada revised statute gives Douglas County, if I'm reading it correctly from the manual, gives Douglas County the option to adopt this portion of the fire code requiring fire sprinklers for all homes, including ones 5,000 square feet or less with, outside of 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant. But they, in doing so, the Nevada revised statute states specifically, you need to have a cost benefit analysis and you need to state that on the record. And that's what we're discussing here today. We're not changing something or overruling some national, international organization, even though I don't think any international organization should tell us what we think is best during the county anyways. But that's not what we're talking about here. It's just a cost benefit analysis to determine whether this should be done or not. So my final comments about what I was gonna say before my vote was, you know, this is a very hard decision because everybody wants people to have a safe environment to be. And in fact, I think that's the most important responsibility for the county commission is to make sure people have a safe, quiet enjoyment of their community and their homes and so forth. But you do have to have a cost benefit analysis of whether the benefit of this extra safety measure is worth the cost it's going to be to the homes. And we've heard testimony anywhere is from the $1 a foot, which I think is extremely low, to up to $30,000 to $40,000 for another home. And, you know, I don't walk in the footsteps of those people who are trying to purchase a home like that, that don't have a home themselves yet and they have to make a decision whether they want to go out and pay rent and exorbitant rents right now or maybe not live with family members or whether they choose under their individual freedoms within our country that, hey, I'd rather buy a home and maybe not have the fire sprinkler system in there because I don't think the risk is, is, is worth the cost to me. So it comes down to, do we as a county board dictate that to these individuals when we're not walking in their footsteps? And I believe very strongly, I have libertarian positions politically that if each person should live the lives they want to live unless substantially harming the other individuals or people within the community. So I asked, one of the key questions I asked Fire Marshal Carlini was, has there been past occurrences where people have lost their lives, have been severely damaged? And we're even, not even talk about homeowners because they're making that choice themselves. It's really, it's really the firemen. We don't want to put the firemen in a position where they're gonna be at significant risk even if there is an additional cost. But there's been no evidence presented today or was told to me yesterday in the meeting that that is the case. So I'm inclined to go along with voting for the change of the amendment to bring it back to what it was in 2009.
Thank you. I sense that we're ready for a motion, so at this time I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 2022-1604.
He's gonna have to make it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt ordinance 2022-1604 as presented based on the information provided to the board. Public comment and discussion by the county commissioners.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Since seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the amendment or the motion to adopt ordinance 2022-1604 and ordinance to amend Title 20, Appendix B of the Consolidated Development Code by revising Section 901.8 of the International Building Code, IBC, as well as Table 903.2.2 of the International Fire Code, IFC, and Section 903.2.4 of the IFC in order to eliminate the requirement to install automatic fire sprinkler systems in all single-family residential structures less five, of less than 5,000 square feet outside of the Tahoe Douglas Fire Protection District. Since seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion, wait a minute. Motion passes, I got to announce the vote. Motion passes three to one with Commissioner Ingles dissenting. So, thank you.
But not down here. And Wes Rice just talked out of two sides of his mouth. He talked about having a gun at home to protect himself.
Mr. Ingles, I would ask you and caution you not to call out other members of the board, please. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. Anyways, I wanted to make one, a couple of final comments on this and I appreciate all your indulgence and your time. As I expressed when I visited with Chief Carlini this last Monday, this certainly, and I indicated that, and I want to reiterate, restate that, in all due respect, in no way reflects a lack of respect of this board, in my opinion, certainly not myself, of our firefighting community nor for their safety. And I think that's important for us to understand. I think I share that feeling with the rest of the board members, but I don't want to speak. I'm sure that they really feel that way. It was reported also in the Record Courier that I particularly had had a change of heart on this particular issue. And I think Mr. Carlini may have referenced that in an earlier comment today. I did not have, and I want to explain that and I want to go on the record for that, I did not have a change of heart, okay? I had no change of heart. I had a misunderstanding of the language that was in the previously stated code. And that's why that particular item was not brought forward and this item was allowed to come forward is because, once again, I had a misunderstanding of exactly the way that code was written. And when I actually got a phone call from our deputy district attorney, Doug Ritchie, several weeks ago when we first had had our presentation on that and said, are you sure this is the way, what you wanted? And I says, I don't know. I was at lunch and I says, I need to come over to your office. We need to take a look at this and reexamine this to ensure that I completely understand what is in this language before we go forward. And so I did take the opportunity to visit with him and he explained where I had my misunderstandings and so that's why this particular version came back to the board for consideration. So anyways, I just wanted to make that perfectly clear that it was not a change of heart, it was rather a misunderstanding. So, thank you. Anyways, item 12 is behind us and I thank everybody once again for their indulgence in bringing this forward and their patience. We'll now, at this time, allow people to exit. Commissioners, is it time for a break and lunch? Ready for lunch? Okay. Okay. It is, I'm gonna ask, it's, my clock is saying 12:38 on my computer. Can we make it back here by 1:30? Is that good with everybody? 1:30? Okay. We will, the board is now in recess until 1:30 for lunch. Thank you. Is that good with everybody? 1:30? Okay. We will, the board is now in recess until 1:30 for lunch. Thank you.
So, good afternoon. It's by my computer. It's 1:33. We were in recess until 1:30. However, our county manager, legal counsel, and Commissioner Rice have not returned yet, so we're going to delay the meeting, stay in recess until they return.
I think we should have a significant fine because they're putting their time ahead of ours.
Unfortunately, that's not on the menu or on the agenda, menu, whatever. So...
Commissioner Gardner was, well, we started at 1:30 or 1:45. I missed something.
Okay. It is 1:41. We're a few minutes late, but we now have all four commissioners that are present today in chambers and also our legal counsel and county manager. So we will now go to...
Recording in progress.
That's a good idea. Thank you. Okay. So we'll go to now item three on the agenda for possible action, discussion to approve the rollover of purchase orders from fiscal year 2021-2022 to fiscal year 2223, up to a maximum of $18,427,475.50, being presented by our chief financial officer, Ms. Willoughby.
Thank you, Terri Willoughby, for the record. In January of 2021, the board approved a policy which is, starts on page 385 of your packet, policy number 300.20, which outlines the process for budget augmentations and transfers. And on page 386, item 2.1, it talks about the budget from outstanding encumbrances, which are contracts and purchase orders we've already entered into, that these will automatically roll over into the year. Now, the balances that we roll are not going to be what you see in front of you. They will be less because we're still processing payments for last fiscal year. And you can see a lot of these purchase orders that are open are for multi-year capital projects. A lot of them are for Cave Rock where there's, that project's going to be going on for multiple years, but when you approve the budget for the project and the contracts, we encumber the amount so that we know how much is committed at that point out of those funds. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The list of encumbrances is also attached, and that is starting on page 376 of your packet. So, and again, those are the balances at the time the report was run. Many of those will not be carried forward. If they're just for one-year projects, we would close them. For example, food purchases, that comes out of your operating budget every year, so we do a new purchase order each year. Those won't carry over into the new budget, but it's mostly ongoing capital projects. Happy to answer any questions.
So, Ms. Willoughby, this is a standard practice that we actually do every year?
Yes.
Because of the contracts and how we...
Right. And you've, you'll see many of these contracts. I'm sure you remember seeing here and approving as a board, and so we're already committed to them. We just want to roll over the budget for the contracts for these multi-year projects.
Okay. Commissioners, any, any other comments to that? So I just, when we initially looked at this, I just wanted to indicate that this was obviously a fairly substantial, a very substantial amount, not, and so I felt that it was best that we bring this forward on the administrative agendas, just so that the public understands what we're doing.
And it's $18 million of lots of small and big items. It's not one large item for 18 million. It's probably about 10 pages adding up to 18 million. And again, that's not going to be the total we end up with.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no questions from the commissioners, this is for possible action, so we'll go to public comment. Are there any public comments that the public wishes to offer here in chambers? Sensing none, Ms. Alges, do we have any public comment online?
Well, Ms. Alges, for the record, there is no public comment online at this time.
Thank you very much. Bringing it back to the board. No further comments. Entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the rollover of purchase orders from fiscal year 2021, 2022 to fiscal year 2022, 23, up to a maximum of $18,427,475.50, as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingalls, to approve the rollover of purchase orders from fiscal year 2021, 22 to fiscal year 2223, up to a maximum of $18,427,475.50. Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes four to zero. Move to item number four, also being presented by Ms. Willoughby, for possible action, discussion to approve the fiscal year 2022, 23 internal audit program. Ms. Willoughby.
Thank you, Terri Willoughby, for the record. Every year, as part of the internal audit program, and Moss Adams brings a proposed, I work with Moss Adams, we bring a proposed audit plan for the next fiscal year to both the audit committee, who reviews and approves, recommends approval to the board, and this item was heard by the audit committee in June. So with that, I'm going to turn it over. We have Haley Garcia of Moss Adams, and she will go through the proposed, proposed plan.
Is she online?
She's on Zoom, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello. Can you...
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes? Okay. Haley Garcia, for the record, I'm a director here at Moss Adams. And as Terri mentioned, we act as the outsourced internal auditor for Douglas County. I will go ahead and share my screen. This is also in your packet, beginning on page, looks like page 390 of your packet, is a PDF copy of this PowerPoint presentation with the fiscal year 2223 internal audit plan. I'm going to share. Can you all see?
Got it.
Yep. Okay, so this was the presentation that was given to the audit committee and recommended for approval. Just to remind the commissioners, or refresh the memory on what the internal audit function does, the county has retained Moss Adams as their designated internal auditor. And we conduct a variety of projects throughout each year focused on risk, internal controls, compliance, and performance across various programs, departments, and functions within the county. Our work is completed under AICPA consultancy standards, and we leverage best practices where possible. There are several components to the internal audit program, and really, we aim to hit every facet of the county over a period of time. And each year, we work with Terri and management, and based on our experience, based on the last risk assessment that was done and approved by the commissioners, we develop a proposed internal audit plan, what are the three to four areas that are going to be focused on during the upcoming fiscal year. So that's what we're presenting here today. There are three distinct projects that are going to be presented on the plan. The first one is a cooperative extension efficiency study, and we will be looking at assessing the organization, processes, collaboration, efficiency, and effectiveness of the cooperative extension program. The second one is one that was planned for last year, but then the audit that we're presenting today over payroll got moved up. So this one got pushed to 2223, and that's the P Card internal controls testing project, which is really testing compliance with the policies and procedures for those employees that utilize a county P Card. The third one is performing a cash handling follow-up spot testing. And so the last cash handling audit was fresh off of the beginning of the pandemic. And so people were not on site. And so, given that, we are going to go back this year, be onsite for some of the events. The airshow and candy dance are two that are up for discussion to attend, as well as go to various sites that receive cash and collect payments on behalf of the county to do some cash testing. We also administer and act as an intermediary for the county's fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, and as the internal auditors, we continue to do that. Our overall audit program is presented here, have the different components, the timing in which we slated them to occur over the next 12 months. And so that is what we're presenting today for approval by the commissioners. Anything to add, Terri?
No, I just wanted to reiterate that this is something that Moss Adams and I collaborate very strongly on, and the timing of the programs. And we've reached out for the special events and notified the organizers that Moss Adams staff will be here in person reviewing the cash handling. But we're happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Ingles? Commissioner Rice?
No.
Okay. Apparently, there's no questions. So anyways, at this time, this is for possible action, so we'll open the floor for public comment here in chambers. Is there anybody here in chambers who wishes to offer public comment on this item? Sensing none, Ms. Elges, is there anybody online who wishes to offer public comment on this item? Let me get you a pair of track shoes.
Well, Ms. Elges, for the record, there is no public comment online regarding this item at this time.
Very good. We'll bring it back to the board. And if there's no further comment, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the fiscal year 2022, 23 internal audit program as presented.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles, to approve the fiscal year 2022, 23 internal audit program. Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. And that concludes item number four. And we'll at this time then go to item number five.
Terri Willoughby, for the record, as Haley identified, this program took the place of the purchasing card review that was slated for fiscal year 2122. And we did come to the board earlier in the year and asked for to swap out the review of payroll internal controls for the purchasing card review. And with that, we have the results of that review, and we would like to present that. Haley will present the findings, and then I'll respond with our response.
Okay, should may proceed.
Haley Garcia, for the record, I will share my screen again. Again, this is in the packet in front of you, beginning on page 395. So we performed an internal controls testing project over the payroll function. I'll just go through the, let's see. Are you all seeing it move?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So I'll go through the executive summary on page one of our report. So we looked at certain aspects of the county's payroll function, including looking at a sample of general payroll disbursements, and looking whether the payroll disbursements tied to the underlying time cards, that time cards were properly approved, correct pay rates were being applied, payroll registers recalculated. We also looked at the use of the E-Suite timekeeping system, as well as the use of a separate outside system that is being used by China Springs Youth Camp. And we looked at the overall process for approving and uploading or transferring files over for the payroll process. We also looked at special payments, and how special payments for certain things within the county, such as motorcycle duty, or certain types of shifts, or on-call duty, and how special payments are being requested, approved, and made through the regular payroll process. Here, on page one, we had a couple of findings and recommendations. Overall, we did not have a lot of significant findings in this area. In general, the majority of the areas that we tested came back with limited or no issues. And the primary issues that we saw are really in these couple of areas that we're going to talk about. The first finding was related to the way that employees are submitting time cards across the county, and how those are being approved. There were many cases in which employees were submitting time cards, and having them even approved prior to the week actually passing, so they were pre-entering time, which can increase the risk that someone ends up calling in and a time card doesn't get updated, or something of that sort, where really, time cards should be submitted and time should be entered after the shifts are actually worked. In addition, we found a couple instances at China Springs, which utilizes an outside payroll system versus E-Suite like the rest of the county. We found there that some of their time card edits, so when someone needed a correction to a time card, or they forgot to clock in or out, or something of that sort, that there were some adjustments that were posted, that we didn't identify any thing specific where it was indicative that something was done wrong on purpose. However, just some of the time card edits that were made just weren't properly documented and approved, because there was one person handling a larger volume of edits that had to be made. Here, we were recommending that employees start being required to submit time cards after having worked the hours, and make sure that their approvals are happening after the fact. That really is kind of just a training thing, and educating different departments about, hey, you can't be pre-populating time cards. On the second area, that just reinforcing with China Springs, and all departments really, because it's a good refresher to know that anytime there's an adjustment to someone's time card, that it needs to be properly documented and approved for that audit trail. Terri, would you like to provide the management response?
Yes, Terri Willoughby, for the record, we agree with the finding and the recommendation. And as Haley mentioned, this is really a training issue. We have new supervisors all the time that come in. And so we have not done training on timekeeping, and particularly the supervisor's role in approving that time. So we're going to start that training during the year. We will record some of the sessions, so they're memorialized forever, and they can be rolled out at the time of hiring new supervisors.
Haley Garcia, for the record, the only other finding in this internal audit was finding number two, related to lack of consistency in when departments were providing documentation to human resources and to finance to support special payments that were being made. So special payments really are anything outside of an employee's normal hourly or salary pays. So things like I mentioned, like on-call motorcycle pay, payments for being on a certain board, or fulfilling a certain assigned duty, that sort of thing. They weren't consistently submitting documentation for what those special payments were, what the agreed-upon amounts were, and when they were approved, and for what time period they should be applied. Our recommendation here was that departments need to be responsible and educated on what they need to collect and submit, and where that documentation needs to be maintained once submitted to both HR and finance, and having a process to regularly review the special payments listing, to go back and get updated authorization or documentation from the related department, so that those can't be in place for an indefinite period of time, but on a quarterly or ever-so-oftentimes going back and verifying that, hey, this person is still fulfilling this role, or this special pay is still appropriate. Terri?
Thank you, Terri Willoughby, for the record. Again, we didn't find, there was nothing that was improper that was found, but we just need to tighten up our procedures. Some special pays are placed as an ongoing special payment through payroll, so they get that every month. And we just need to check with the departments that are submitting these, that like on a regular basis, like quarterly, make sure that, for example, if someone is assigned to motorcycle duty, it's just our due diligence to make sure that they're still there, and that somehow they're not on the duty, or getting, not eligible for the special pay, but mistakenly left on. So it's just internally tidying up our finance procedures, as well as educating the departments through training.
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Ingles?
Ms. Garcia, still there?
Yes, I am.
In regard to the separate payroll coming out of China Spring and the county, are those checks being drawn on the same bank?
Terri Willoughby, oh, I can answer.
Yeah, go ahead.
So they're all coming out of our county bank account. Normally, you would have, you might have a separate payroll system. For example, a lot of law enforcement agencies use Telostat for scheduling and timekeeping, but that should be interfacing into our timekeeping and uploading into the system. Right now, it's a manual upload from their payroll system. Their timekeeping system into our payroll system, but it's all paid out of our bank account and our financial system. It's just a manual process.
Any additional questions? I had one observation and one question. Number one, the observation is, is that in this document, we are identified as county supervisors. So our titles are actually county commissioners. So I would hope that maybe they would correct that, so that we are making sure that we are identifying the correct body. That's number one. Number two, in regards to the sheriff's deputies, and perhaps Sheriff Coverly, or perhaps yourself can answer this question, but in regards to the sheriff's deputies, who is actually responsible for signing off on their timesheets? Is that the commanding captain, or is it the-
Terri Willoughby, for the record, I believe each shift has a supervisor, and they're approving the time, but I'll defer to Sheriff Coverly.
So that's correct. So every deputy is supervised by a sergeant. And so the deputies that are, the sergeant, the people that are underneath him, whatever division or assignment he has, he is tasked with supervising, signing each one of their time cards and supervising that. The sergeants, their time cards are approved by a captain of the division. And then the captain's time cards are approved by the undersheriff. And I'm not really sure who's doing mine.
We don't know.
I probably miss Coverly.
Yeah. The other thing to note is that the, it's not as simple as that. The payroll system is very complicated, and it's easy to mess up, especially with the sheriff's office and facilities that run a 24-hour cycle. And you have overtime and things and stuff. And so everything is reviewed by Gabby to make sure that it's correct before it's actually sent over to, and then any kind of corrections, or if there's a mistake, because I know this is a shock, but guys screw stuff up. And so there's a pretty good system to ensure that it's, if the time card is kicked back, or has to be reviewed, that it's done in a timely manner, and it still goes through all those processes before it's sent over in its final form.
Thank you.
And Terri Willoughby, for the record, the timekeeping system we have is not the most robust I've ever seen in the entire world. It doesn't have a scheduling component, which would probably be very helpful for the sheriff's department, where people could schedule their vacations in time within the system. And then you would see, oh, they're off on this day, and somebody else could come in, and they wouldn't, they couldn't overlap vacation time. And then it would automatically come into their time card. So there's some improvements to be made. I think a lot of it is, we have new supervisors we haven't trained since I've been here, done any timekeeping training on what should be done. It'll be a fun with finance topic.
So it's just a process of fine tuning and tightening up the system a little bit?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
For example, I'm doing a training this Friday with department heads on what to look for when you're approving invoices. So we'll do the similar type of training and record it.
Okay. So once again, this is for possible action items, so we will open the floor for public comment on this. Is there any public comment here in chambers regarding this item number five? Seeing none, Ms. Elges, is there any online public comment?
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. We do have an online caller, so we need to let the public know, and this online channel, that we are no longer accepting online calls at this time. However, we have no further Zoom online public comment.
Thank you. Then we'll bring it back to the board for action. Then we'll bring it back to the board for action. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Douglas County Payroll Internal Controls Report as presented.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles to approve the Douglas County Payroll Internal Controls Review Report as presented by Moss Adams. Since no further discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. And now we'll go to item number six. This is per presentation only, so we will not be entertaining public comment on this one. Presentation and discussion on a proposal from Holman Capital Corporation for possible lease purchase financing for the construction of the new Douglas County Judicial Center and the remodeling of the existing judicial and law enforcement center project, uh, more commonly known as the J-Lex Center. Uh, this is being presented by our county manager, Patrick Kates, Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Terry Willoughby, and by Lance Holman of Holman Capital. You may proceed.
Terry Willoughby for the record, the first item I have is just a very brief presentation on the pros and cons of debt financing for the public and the board to know, so I will go ahead and share my screen. There we go. Okay. Kind of going over the pros and cons and different methods of financing, financing considerations, proper debt management and policies. So there's really three different types of financing. Pays you go, which is you would wait till you have the money to do the project. Pros, you don't need future funds. Con, obviously, you could be waiting a very long time to build your building or put in infrastructure. Interest cost is, can be put towards other projects, that would be pro. Cons, large projects might take all your money and you might not be able to do any other capital projects. Pro, you would avoid the disc, the, avoid the risk of default. Con, there's always a risk of inflation. In this case, it's probably a pro to issue debt sooner rather than later. Debt financing, pro. You can build when you need. Future cost would be higher, as we're seeing the cost of construction's going up. Con, the cost of borrowing. Pro, you spread the cost over the useful life of, of the project. In the example of the judicial center, you're talking about at least a 30-year life for a building, so it will be more than outlast the debt. Your debt payments may limit future budget availability. You're going, will have to put the budget, budget for the debt service payments. But again, we've talked about priorities with the board and what they want to do. Increases capacity to invest by not tying up cash is a pro. Beneficiaries of the project, current and future, are going to pay for the project. It's, it's not just the people that are getting, paying for at the inception of the project, but you're spreading those costs over the life of the building and over the generations. Also frees up the operating budget for other uses by spreading the cost over a larger time period. Public-private partnership, which is a cooperative agreement between two or more public and private sector projects, uh, partners. Typically, you would transfer the risk to the partnership. Con would be obviously a loss of operational control. Accelerated project delivery, because you may be able to do it as a private entity rather than government. Changes in scope or performance standards, public expectation versus private expectation may delay the project. External funding is a pro, but again, it may be subject to law, changes in law and the approvals from other external agencies. And pro would again be lower operating costs. Considering, considerations for determining how to finance a new project would be the sense of urgency. Is there an immediate need? Again, in this case of the judicial center, we have the land and we probably need a building to put on the land. How much fans, funds are in hand and available, and we'll be covering that with the board extensively as we move forward in this process. And what is the asset's useful life? For debt finance projects, the bond period should not exceed the asset's useful life. So we don't want to take out a 10-year loan for a car that's going to have a useful life of three or five. Is inflation expected to increase? This is going to be a key consideration, both of these two items in this project. Is the borrowing rate or interest rate expected to increase? Proper debt management and issuance. Again, we don't want the bond to exceed the asset's useful life. We want to have financial policies which include a comprehensive debt management policy, which we do. We adopt, that comes to, that is done every year. Considering, consider other mechanisms such as P3s, public-private partnership, or non-traditional methods, such as private sector capital financing. So debt financing option, the revenue bonds, we've seen this with the water bonds that we've refunded and issued last year for Cave Rock. They're backed by a specific type of revenue. General obligations bond, medium-term financing, direct financing, direct to investors. And this is where, instead of going through the bond process, you're going directly to the people that would buy the bonds. Certificates of participation, which is an alternative to bond financing, allows an individual to buy a share of the lease revenue of an agreement made by entities. So you wouldn't own the asset, you would lease the owners, the lease owners would own it and we would give them lease revenue. Possible revenue sources, property taxes, uh, special dedicated sales tax, gas tax, consolidated revenues, taxes. Again, we want to show the commitment. You're, pro of issuing debt, you're showing a commitment to getting this project done. You're not relying on your ability to save for projects. You don't want to, we could say, we're going to put a million dollars away every year, but would that really happen? And you'll see immediate results. You stretch the cash flow over the life of the asset, and then you need to balance the cost of issuing debt and funding the project immediately versus the cost of delaying the project. And I will let Mr. Holman go into that in more detail.
Terry, are you handing the ball over to me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let me share my screen. Good afternoon, I'm Lance Holman. I'm president of Holman Capital Corporation, and, uh, I've been asked to, um, make a presentation regarding the proposal that we presented to Douglas County on the financing of the Judicial Center and the Justice Center. We have a $40 million financing where we will deposit $40 million into an escrow account. The interest rate is very much like a mortgage on your home. Um, it's 4.35%. The payments due back to Holman Capital are two times a year over a term of 15 years, and we structured it with the payments going, uh, increasing by, uh, $200,000 each year. And by doing that, you reduced your interest expense from $23 million to $17 million. So if you add the 17 million and the 40 million, the total payback over the 15 years is $57,372,629. The less C is Douglas County. They are a political subdivision under section 103 of the tax code. What does that mean? That means that you can, means the county, uh, can borrow money at lower rates. Uh, the interest income that Holman Capital earns is exempt from federal taxation. Effectively, the federal government is giving us a discount if we lend money to municipalities and we pass that discount on to Douglas County. The use of the proceeds again is the construction of the Justice Center and the remodeling of the Judicial Law Enforcement Center. We would establish a $40 million guidance line of credit. Uh, we would set it up what's called a master lease purchase agreement, uh, which requires, uh, the municipality to own the asset. You're, you are responsible for the operation and maintenance and insurance of the asset, and each year the governing body, uh, will appropriate, uh, through their budgetary process, the payment due back to Holman Capital. So if we gave you 15 payments of a dollar each, then each year you, you would have in your budget a, a dollar that you would appropriate back, and then those funds would be paid upon your appropriation process is completed. There are two types of issuers that the IRS has in the United States for municipalities. The first one is called large issuers, and a large issuer is any issuer that expects to issue greater than $10 million in new tax-exempt debt or capital leases in the current calendar year. Obviously, you're issuing 40 million, so you would be what's considered a large issuer, and the technical term for that is non-bank qualified. Doesn't mean that a bank can't, uh, invest in it, it just is the technical term. If you were to issue less than $10 million the next year, you would, uh, be a small issuer and the, and the technical term for that is bank qualified. And it's more for our portfolio purposes. Uh, the federal government wants to make sure that we're, uh, issuing debt to small and large communities, so this is the way that we track it by going over or under $10 million per deal. As far as flexibility, uh, the county has the ability to pay off the obligation in full on any scheduled payment date at the purchase option amount, and I'll show that to you in a minute. Uh, the funds would be deposited into an escrow fund, or i.e. a project fund, and the county would be able to submit, receive invoices from its vendor and approve those invoices and then submit those invoices to the escrow agent, uh, for payment, and those, uh, invoices would be paid in two business days. Every single month, there would be a monthly statement going out to the county showing you your inflows and outflows of your escrow account for your accounting purposes. These are the items that we would need, uh, to disperse funds. There's a form called the escrow dispersment request form. There's a certificate of acceptance of the project or a contract. There's title insurance. Uh, if you want it to be reimbursed, let's say that the county advanced the funds and wants us to reimburse them, then they could just submit proof of payment and we would reimburse them those dollars and obviously proof of insurance. Again, you would just have to have insurance on the asset to protect the county and Holman Capital. The county would need a pay and performance bond in place so that the facility is built to specifications, uh, per your agreement with the contractor, and Holman Capital would like to be named as co-obligee on that pay and performance bond. The county would select and authorize, uh, individual to sign the documents on behalf of the governing body. Could be someone from the governing body, it could be someone from your staff. There would be a legal opinion, uh, that states that the transaction was, uh, duly executed according to the laws of the state of Nevada. We have engaged, uh, local Nevada legal counsel in Reno to represent us on this transaction should we decide to move forward. And so we would follow both federal and state statutes. Again, the, the county would have a title to the asset. As far as, uh, documentation with our law firm, uh, the total fees to the county would be $20,000, which is very low, uh, for, uh, a transaction, and that's one of the benefits of direct lending. The, another benefit of direct lending is the rate lock, so we would hold our rates firm until the 26th of August. Obviously, rates are very volatile, they're bouncing up and down quite a bit with the Fed moving rates again, and so we want to give you some time to think about this and approve it, but also we can start the legal process, and when you come back a second time, if you need to vote a second time, uh, then we could bring back the final contracts and, and fund before the 26th and deposit the funds into escrow. If it goes beyond the 26th, then we would, uh, adjust the rates to then market conditions at that time. Um, this item is requesting the three years of audited financials. We found this information online. Uh, it says that everything's subject to Holman Capital's credit approval. We've actually already credit approved this transaction, so we are ready to proceed. Uh, and that pretty much covers the qualitative portion. As far as the quantitative portion, I created a amortization schedule for you, and essentially these payments are twice a year. So if you funded in late August, your first payment would be due in late, um, uh, February of 2023, and two payments of 1.2 million would be 2.4 million dollars per year, and then the next year it would bump up by 200,000, uh, and then the next year you can see it's bumping up to 2.8 and 3.3 million. And the reason we structured this is because, uh, this allows you to make a larger principal payment as your assessed values rise and you can amortize the loan more quickly. If we spread the loan out over 20 years, again, it would have been $23 million in interest expense, and as you can see, your total interest expense is 17.3 million dollars. And your total payback with the 40 million would be 57,372. That concludes our, uh, review of the proposal, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willoughby. Before we go to questions, do you have anything to add to this?
Terry Willoughby, I don't have any other comments at this time. And I'll, we'll talk at, at the end about what the next steps will be.
Commissioner Tarkanian?
Just three quick ones. I assume that is fixed rate because it didn't change, correct? Fixed for the 15 years?
Correct.
Okay. And is your rate based upon a certain index?
Yes, we price based upon treasuries. Uh, so we use, uh, the 10-year treasury as our benchmark for these types of transactions. Uh, and so as the treasury moves up and down, uh, and treasury's obviously been moving up, uh, we price the deal, we want to hold the rate firm for a period of time, uh, and so we take that interest rate risk. That's why we give you roughly a 30-day window.
Okay, so what is it based upon? How, how many basis points?
So today it's about, I'd have to go back and double check and convert it back, but you're probably going to be about 170 over and then you have to, over the 10-year, and then you convert that to a, um, a tax exempt rate by multiplying that taxable yield times one minus the marginal tax rate of the lender, which is 0.21%, that's a 21% tax rate. So it's really 79% times, uh, the gross taxable rate, and it comes out to 435. Now that, that rate is changing.
I'm, I'm sorry. You, okay. 170 basis point times 0.79 the tax rate. What did you, so what would the final basis be over the 10-year treasury?
I, it, it fluctuates every day because the 10-year, when I priced this, it was probably 300, 300 and some change.
I think you quoted 4.3% or something like that. It was 4.1 something. So what was 4.1 something based upon? The 10-year treasury times how many basis points?
Let me go back and look. Give me a second, please. Go back and look. Now, one second, please. Let me start to share my screen.
Final question I could ask.
Yeah.
Willoughby is, I, I assume you, did you go out to different people? This is the best one we had, because we haven't seen anything else as a board.
This is a presentation only. When we come back for our final review, we will talk about how much a certificate of participation, bank financing will cost and how much a bond would cost.
And there's partly other, there are other companies that do the same thing as Holmgren. I, I would assume that you went to two or three people and this is the best one you had?
I talked to our financial advisor, yes, and to Holman, and the, the cost of financing, the cost of issuance costs that were quoted by the financial advisor, which are not in the packet, for a bond would be 465,000 versus Holman Capital at 220,000.
I'm not sure what you're, what are I'm not sure what you're, what all that means.
Cost of issuance?
I'm just asking if other companies that do this, I mean, usually like you go get a loan to build something.
Right. And I did speak to our financial advisor. So at that point, we would go to different banks.
Commissioner Tarkanian, if I can add to that. Zach Wadley, District Attorney's Office. Part of this process under Nevada law, if you want to go with a lease purchase agreement like this with private capital, you do have to conduct an analysis of other options, either bank placements, bond issuances. And an analysis has to be made to compare all of those options together to see, you know, which is the better deal, or, you know, why the county may want to go with a private capital provider. So that's, it is part of the process if we go further down the line here.
Okay. So I understand you checked and see which of the options you thought would be cost beneficial to the county, and you came up with this option.
This is a presentation only on one option. We're not asking for a decision. When we come back, we will have a full analysis.
Okay. So just so I can get clear, okay? There's different options you could have. You can present that to us before we vote. It'd be nice if we knew which options, well, we had the presentation, so we'd have all the facts, and maybe there's other ones that would be better. And I just, one thing, I mean, because I'm jumping to another area. I just, let's say you, let's say you figured this was the best approach, the private-public option. That's what this is, correct?
It's direct financing. Not P3, it's direct financing.
It's not what?
P3. Public-private partnership. It's not that. This is merely a direct financing.
Okay.
So we would bring, the plan is to bring other presentations from other types of financing to the board.
Yeah. Okay. So there's either other types of financing, or it's this type of financing. My question was with this type of financing, is this the only company we've spoken with? Or did we talk to some other direct financiers to see which one would be the best one?
Terry, for the record, I know other direct financing. I know that Holman Capital's reputation in the industry is esteemed, may I say? So I'd be happy to look into that for you.
Okay. Again, I don't know what the kind of financing would be with respect to the county. It's 1.7, 170 basis points. I'm sorry, that's going into, it's 4. some percent right now with the interest rates going up. I have no idea what that would be unless you had other people that gave you competitive quotes. That's what I was asking for. Did you find out the, what it was based upon, the 10-year treasury?
Yeah, it was, when we priced it, the 10-year was at a 3.28, and it was a 2.22 spread because there's volatility in the marketplace, and we're holding the rate. You multiply that times 0.79%, and that gives you a 4.35.
Okay. All right. You're going to have to talk with me as a novice because you just lost me.
So I'm sorry.
There's a 10-year treasury rate, and it's, what is it right now, did you say?
Well, when we priced the deal, it was at a 3.28.
It was 3.28% was a 10-year treasury?
Right. And then we have a spread. We've had a spread of a 2.22. And then you add those two together, and you multiply, you multiply that times 79%, and that gives you a 4.35.
Okay. So the treasury rate was 3.28%. You had a 222 basis points, and you reduced the amount that you got for the credit, the tax exempt credit. So it's basically 222 basis point less the tax credit.
3.28 plus 2.22 gives you a 5.50, times 79% gives you a 4.35.
Okay. I'm not, thank you. It's a treasury rate, and then whatever's over it is how many basis points you go over the treasury rate. If I understand you correctly, it's 2.22 less the tax exempt. That's all the questions I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Ingles, any questions? Mr. Holman? Commissioner Rice?
I don't, I don't have any questions either. So what is our, so as I understand it, whenever we make a decision on how we're going to go about this, the financing process of the, of a new judicial center, regardless of how we're going to go about it, this will, it's anticipated that this will cost us at 40 million, which would provide us with a new judicial center on the property that we purchased several months ago. And it will also cover the remodeling of the existing judicial and law enforcement center on Buckeye. That would turn over basically that entire building to Sheriff Coverly and what his needs are. That's, is that correct?
That is my understanding, and I'm going to ask County Manager Katez to jump in there.
For the record, Patrick Katez, yes, that is correct. My recollection, those figures included both the remodel of JLEC and construction of the new judicial building.
Okay. And so the other county entities that are spread out over several buildings within our county, this would not address any of that. That's for a further discussion amongst commissioners and amongst the members of the public in regards to how we want to proceed with that, should we want to proceed with that down the line. That, that's an assumption, a good assumption. Okay. Okay. You know, we have recognized the need for a new judicial portion of our county needs. The current JLEC center was built in 1982. We had 19,000 residents then. We're now approaching 50,000 with no expansion to that, other than the jail itself, which is required by the ACLU, I believe, a few years ago, or I don't know how exactly how long ago. But, okay. So now what we're trying to do is determine what we're going to do with that piece of property and how we're going to go about financing it. Correct?
Terry, for the record, yes. I believe the next steps would be to bring back an analysis of various financing options with the projections, the cash flow projections I will be fine tuning. It's mostly done. And then the board would, at that time, direct the Debt Management Commission to convene and hear the financing. And Zach can jump in there if I'm wrong.
And when would you expect to bring that back to the board?
Terry, for the record, we are have our, we have hired outside counsel through the District Attorney's Office. It is currently going to be reviewing the deal from our side, and we would certainly could bring back a timeline for the next meeting.
Is that doable, Mr. Wadley?
I think it's doable. Zach Wadley, for the record, just Deputy District Attorney. You know, the process that we go through is dependent on the, somewhat dependent on the method of financing that we ultimately choose. And again, the county will retain outside specialized public finance counsel on this. It's a specialized area to take a look at not only Holman Capital's proposed deal, but any other possible deals that we're looking at. So I don't, as far as timing, Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't know exactly when staff will be prepared to bring it back to you, but I think that what Ms. Willoughby described as the next step is accurate, that a description of really that the various options and what they may cost would be presented to the board.
Obviously, that's important, right, Mr. Tarkanian? Exploring our different options. And?
There's two different parts to it. One's the different options, which is just saying the different types of possible financing. And then when you decide which one is the best, and you want to have multiple bids to figure out which is the best one. For example, when you did this initial project, the treasury yield when you gave this proposal was 3.28%. Today, it's at 2.728%, so it's almost a half a point less already. So is there going to be somebody else who will give us a better deal? That's all I'm asking. I'm not trying to be hard on it. I just want to make sure the county gets the best deal.
As we all do. Yep, I agree. Mr. Ingles, you had something to share with us?
Yes, I'd like to direct this to Mr. Holman. Mr. Holman, in your presentation, what was the total principal and interest on, that was presented?
The total principal and interest on the transaction was 57,372,629.00.
Thank you. So it's more than 40 million?
Well, your principal is 40 million.
Yes. I understand.
I thought you said principal. I thought you said principal and interest.
No, excuse me. The point I'm trying to make is the chairman presented 40 million. It's really going to cost us more than that. I'm not saying that you aren't entitled to it, but that's just that we have to look at what the total cost is. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you.
Yes, I mean, I, Commissioner Ingles, I understand that the only usable funds we're going to have is the 40 million. But in order to, in order to gain that, we're going to have to pay, obviously, pay interest on it, just like any other loan that anybody takes out. So it's, and as Commissioner Tarkanian is indicating, you know, we need to look at what are our best options and see where we should go if we want to go that way. So anyways, any other questions of Mr. Holman or of our presenters? Since seeing none, there's, was, as I understand it, a presentation-only item, so there will not be taking public action or public comment. So I thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you very much, Mr. Holman. And I'm sure that as we go down the line here with this, we're bringing it back to this board for possible action anyways, or some direction, right? So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Okay. So we'll move into item number seven for possible action. Discussion to approve the purchase of 2.24.028 acre-feet annual of water rights for the future beneficial use of Douglas County at a total cost of 2 million, 2 million, 16,252? Is that right, Mr. Richter? I didn't see any .00 after that. Okay. And authorize the county manager to sign the agreement. The total purchase price will be divided into five equal annual payments starting October 1st, 2022 through October 1st, 2026. This is being presented by our Public Works Manager, Phil Richter.
Is it on? Okay, thank you. Phil Richter, Director of Public Works, for the record. So this is, as you just read into the, into the record, this is the request to purchase roughly 224 acre-feet of water rights. These water rights had been held privately by the McKibben Group. I'll call it for, instead of trying to list out all the names that are in the, in your board packet, but they've been held by Douglas County under what I'll call sort of a banking agreement since the late, late 80s, around 89, for the beneficial use. So the county was banking those water for the beneficial use of properties that were owned by the McKibben Group to be, to be provided back to them as municipal water. Last year, the McKibben Group sold their property, the last holdings that they had in the county, and the purchaser of that land did not want the water, did not purchase that water. So this water now became, under the, under the terms of that 1989 agreement, the water became, or it came back to them as an asset to the McKibben Group for their disposition. So they have approached us as the county with the request to see if we wanted to purchase that water. And the utility, the Douglas County Water Utility is recommending that we make that purchase and have negotiated this agreement with them, this contract with them, to purchase that water at the prevailing rate with five-year terms. So the payout would be over a five-year period and no interest to us. So it's a straight transaction. We don't pay any carrying charges or holding charges or interest on the deferred payments. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Very good. Commissioners? Commissioner Ingles?
So what do we know about this water? Is there any, any other adjacent entities that are pulling water from this aquifer?
Phil Richter, Director of Public Works, for the record. So the water rights themselves, this water actually has been, the, it's filed with the state, and the appropriation for this water is in an existing Douglas County municipal well. So the rights themselves are in a well, so there's no, the wells that were originally drilled on that property have been abandoned, and the water rights are residing in our wells. So it's actually water that is completely, I mean, at this point, usable for the county, for our water demands and our needs. It has, there's no regulatory issues or state issues with the state of Nevada to appropriate this water or move this water to be able to utilize it. It already exists in our system. It has existed in our system for the better of 10 years.
So you're familiar with the depth and the quality of this water, then?
Yeah, Phil Richter, for the record. So I don't want to get too far into the weeds on this, but water, water rights themselves, in this case, these water rights are an appropriation from the state of a volume of water that can be pumped from the ground. It doesn't define the location or the quality of that water. Water rights in general do not do that. That's specific to the well. So this, in fact, this water, these rights are in a well that we do, that we use routinely right now, and we know where it is. It's, it's really there to support the expansion of the system.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Richter, I do have a question here. This 224 acre-feet annual, if Douglas County doesn't purchase this, it's on the market, it could be on the market for other water purchasers. Is that, would that be a correct statement or not? I don't, I don't understand. I'm not sure I understand it.
Yeah. Phil Richter, Director of Public Works, for the record. Yes, this water, as it stands right now, is in private ownership and is available to any, they can sell to any purchaser at this point. And I, and there are other entities, other water municipalities in the, in the region that would be interested in purchasing this water if we did not purchase it.
Would that include Carson City?
I believe it would.
So what we're really doing is protecting our asset by, our available asset to, even though we don't own the asset now, but we are, we're certainly protecting it from like-minded individuals who are looking for additional water sources. Is that, would that be?
That, I mean, that is one way to look at it. It's, the other thing is this water has been a part of our, our holdings and our assets as the utility for the better of 12 years. I mean, going back to, basically going back to the early, actually, probably more than that, 20 years, going back to the 90s. So it has been an asset on our books that we've been able to use to support the growth of the utility. And it is one that can be taken away at this point, so we felt it necessary to acquire it.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Tarkanian, any questions? Commissioner Rice? Okay. This is a action item, so without further questions from the board, we'll go to public comment. Is there any public comment? Anybody in chambers here that wishes to offer public comment on this? Since seeing none, Ms. Elgus, is there any public comment online?
Mr. Chairman, I think we may have enough water coming down now that we won't have to purchase the rest of it.
Are you going to go out and catch it?
Melissa Elgus, for the record, there is no online public comment on this item at this time.
Very good. I see Ms. Carrie Rosser has added, joined us as well. I don't know if Ms. Rosser had anything to add to this, or you just?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I do not have anything extra to add unless you all had questions that I might be able to help answer.
Okay. Bring it back to the board. Commissioners, any additional questions or possible motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the purchase of 224.028 acre-feet annual of water rights for the future beneficial use of Douglas County at a total cost of 2 million, 16,000. of Douglas County at a total cost of two million sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and no cents, and authorize county manager to sign the agreement.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles, to approve the purchase of two hundred and twenty-four point oh-two-eight acre-feet annual of water rights for the future beneficial use of Douglas County at a total cost of two million sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars, and authorize county manager to sign the agreement. The total purchase price will be divided into five equal annual payments starting October first, 2022 through October first, 2026. Since seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you very much. Hopefully we can capture the rest of the rain that's coming down, right? So, item number eight for possible action, discussion on the appointment of a Justice of the Peace for the East Fork Township Justice Court to serve the remainder of the unexpired term of Justice of the Peace Cassandra Jones, including A, direct staff to prepare a board resolution for a special election procedure to fill the vacancy in the East Fork Township Justice Court pursuant to NRS four point one-five-oh, one B, or item, or possibility of two, B, the possible appointment of Paul Gilbert, who is our current constable, for the remainder of the unexpired term through December, 2024, conditioned upon his resignation as constable no later than August twenty-sixth, 2022, at an initial salary, annual salary of nineteen one hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and four dollars, which may subsequently be increased pursuant to NRS four point oh-four-oh, or the possibility, C, direct staff to create a selection process to fill the vacancy of East Fork Township Justice of the Peace in compliance with Nevada law, including the preparation, preparation of a questionnaire for interested applicants, creating a selection committee, defining the selection process timeline and the date the selection of the East Fork Township Justice of the Peace will occur. And this is being presented by our HR Director, Ms. Wendy Lang.
Thank you very much, Chairman, members of the Commission, Wendy Lang, Human Resources. Following the unfortunate and sad loss of Judge Jones last month, this board is faced with a vacancy in the office of the East Fork Township Justice of the Peace and the need to fill that vacancy. Legal counsel and the county manager's office have analyzed NRS two forty-five dot one seventy, which provides for the avenues that were just mentioned in the introduction of this item to fill the position. Just a brief recap, as noted in the introduction entitled, that those three options are essentially to hold an election, appoint the current constable, or initiate a competitive selection process. And myself and legal counsel are here to answer any questions that this board may have in contemplating those avenues. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Tarkanian? Oh, no, no.
Should we opt to do a special election? What would that cost the citizens?
I apologize, Amy Bergens, Douglas County Clerk Treasurer, for the record. Mark can correct me because I did give him the figures, but I'm pretty sure, or Chairman Gardner can correct me if I'm incorrect. I gave him the figures when he requested them, but I believe it would cost the county about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run a special election.
Thank you.
I just have one question, and because incumbency is so big in being reelected, if we appoint the current, the constable now for a full-time position, is, are you going to run again for, will you be running for reelection? Or is this just to fill the term?
So I, I don't know what, it's, it's my understanding that several months ago, we went through the process of eliminating the office of constable because of current constable, Paul Gilbert, indicating his desire to, after thirty-five years, retire. And so that office ceases to exist as of January first. It was, it was not included in, because of our actions earlier this year, it was not included in the election process for, in the primary process, with the anticipation of termination of that office as of January first, twenty twenty-five, or twenty twenty-three. That office will no longer exist as of that date. So, you know, so then it's a question of whether or not, if, if we were to appoint the constable to that position, it's my understanding that he's, he's still looking anxiously to, to retire, from my understanding, but.
My point, I was asking not about the constable position, I was asking about the Justice of the Peace. If we appoint him now, is he going to run for reelection, or is he going to retire?
I, I don't.
A lot of people, when you make these appointments, a lot of boards ask if they're going to run for reelection or not, because obviously it gives a big heads up, leg up to somebody who's, who's in office. So I, so I guess a question for Ms. Lang would be, or for legal counsel would be, is there any possibility of putting a condition upon that appointment? Should it be, should we appoint? I, I don't know that we have the legal ability to ask and or make that comment, but I, I would appeal to, or accede to legal counsel to give us a direction on that.
Thank you, Chairman. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. You're correct, Chairman. The process is set forth in statute, and you can't condition, you can't condition it. The only reason there's a condition on his retirement as constable is because he cannot hold two offices, but Mr. Gilbert is in the off, is in the audience if the board would like to ask him that question.
I mean, you used the word condition. I didn't say we were going to condition it or didn't make that motion. As I asked, he's in the audience, I just, I was asking if you would, what his intent is, just what you said.
I, I don't, I think it would be certainly within our aspects or rights to, Mr. Gilbert is here, so if he would like to address us, and perhaps you can, if he's so interested, I guess he could ask that, answer that question directly to you.
For the record, Paul Gilbert. Currently, I have over forty-two years in with Douglas County. I've, my intention was to retire. I did not seek this office. I'm willing to take it, and right now I have no intention of going for reelection. You know, I, you'd never say never, but I'll be close to seventy years old at the end of this term. No offense to those on the board, but yeah, that's, is my intention to retire at the end of, or retire in a couple of months, whichever way this comes out.
Sure hope I look as good as you at seventy. You sure look young.
Any other questions of Mr. Gilbert?
I do.
That's telling you to be careful.
I'm sorry, Paul, I didn't know the gun was loaded. Sir, how long have you already served as a judge pro temp?
Thirty-five years.
And you have been to Judicial College?
Yes.
And you would be able to hit the ground running?
As much as I'm capable of.
Well, as, as far as your, your garment would allow.
Yes.
All right. And again, it's my understanding that this, not only did you not seek it, but you pretty much had to be talked into accepting it. Should it be offered?
Pretty much that's the case.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank, thank you.
So, well, Mr. Gilbert's here. Commissioner Ingles, do you have any questions? Mr. Gilbert?
Due to the exigent circumstances, option B is probably in the best interests of the county, and we appreciate you stepping up, Mr. Gilbert. So that would be my position, is to go with option B.
Okay. I don't, I don't have, you know, I appreciate you serving our county as constable, and certainly I, I know that you have served over the last eight months in, as a judge pro temp in, in place of Judge Cassandra Jones, on a fairly regular basis as judge pro temp over the last eight months while she was undergoing her unfortunate circumstances. So we appreciate that, and, and so I know that you're, come highly recommended and, and certainly appear to possess all the skills to, to do the job, so. But we do have, this is for possible action, so I appreciate coming forward and sharing with us your feelings. And if there's no other further comments by the board or questions, and as a for-action item, we'll go to public comment and allow the public to.
Mr. Chairman, I do not have a question for Mr. Gilbert, but I do, would like to make a comment. Okay, thank you. Option C is, is something that I contemplated when we were first discussing this, and I don't mean we were discussing it, I mean, when, when the subject first came up. And I know that there are several very qualified attorneys, both former prosecutors as well as defense, that are interested in this job. And knowing that Constable Gilbert has no intention of running for reelection, I think it would be the, the fair thing to do to not give anyone a leg up by being the incumbent and let the people of Douglas County decide who, who they would best like to have serve them. And for that reason, I also agree with option B.
Okay. So anyways, once again, this is for possible action, and so I'll reserve my comments until after we hear public comment. Is there anybody here in chambers who wishes to offer public comment? I see nobody aggressively going towards the podium, so, Ms. Elges, is there anybody online who wishes to offer public comment?
Melissa Elges, for the record, there is no online public comment at this time.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the board. As my fellow commissioners have already stated, I, I too am reluctant to choose, go through process numbers, well, number one, process A, which calls for a special election. I, you know, we have, we cannot get this on the ballot in November, to my understanding. Is that right, Ms. Bergens?
Amy Bergens, Douglas County Clerk Treasurer, that is correct. We would not be able to get it on the November ballot.
Okay. And as it turns out, because of what the Nevada State Legislature did to us a couple of last session, you're now required to run three elections in 2024. Is that correct? Presidential primary election?
Presidential preference primary will be held in February of twenty-four. The regular primary will be in June, and then in November, we will have the general election in 2024.
Well, if we ran a special election, you'd certainly have practice, wouldn't you? But it would cost us, it would cost the taxpayers money, and I would prefer not to do that. And option C, once again, we would, we, as a board, would be putting the possibility of, of a title of incumbency behind the, the name of an individual that we would eventually select. I do know that Mr. Gilbert has been serving as a judge pro temp, and as a matter of fact, in lieu of Judge Cassandra Jones being able to sign those temporary judges pro temp, that has fallen on my shoulders, and, and so I know, for instance, he's served very capably, I understand, has been serving and has served this last Monday, if I'm not mistaken, right? So anyways, that's my inclination as well. So at this time, I would entertain a motion from the board. Commissioner Rice?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board use option B and appoint Paul Gilbert for the remainder of the unexpired term through December, 2024, conditioned upon his resignation as the constable. No la, excuse me, no later than August twenty-sixth, 2022, with an additional, with an annual salary of one hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and four, which may be subsequently increased pursuant to NRS four point zero four zero.
Second that as well.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles, to choose option B and appoint Paul Gilbert for the remainder of the unexpired term through December, 2024, conditioned upon his resignation as the constable no later than August twenty-sixth, 2022, at an initial annual salary of one hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and four dollars, which may subsequently be increased pursuant to NRS four point oh-four-oh. Since seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes four to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Gilbert. As I understand it, this actually may decrease your salary. Is that right? Okay, so not too often we see somebody accepted a position that's actually going to cost him money out of his pocket. But anyways, we appreciate your service. Thirty-five years in our county already, and.
Forty years as constable, thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay. As, as, okay, forty years as constable, four, five as, as a judge pro temp. I know that in talking with Mr. Evan Jones, Cassandra's husband, I know that your name was mentioned as a possible successor to her, and I know that she had a great deal of respect for you. I wanted to share that with you. And, and we look forward to having you with the county for an additional two-plus years. So thank you very much. Okay, congratulations. Yep, thank you. Okay. Item number nine, and I see some folks in the audience for this, okay, for possible action, discussion to adopt ordinance 2022 dash one six oh-one, repealing existing Douglas County Code Title VI, animals, chapters six point oh-four, definitions point, six point oh-eight, licensing for dogs, kennels, and pet shops, cat and ferret registration, six point one-six, dog restrictions, penalty, six point two-oh, impoundment, six point two-four, restraining and abandonment of animals, and six point two-eight, investigation, citation, and penalties, and replacing the repealed chapters with chapters six point oh-four, definitions six point oh-eight, dog, cat, and ferret license, foster animals, dog number limitation, six point one-two, dog breeders, dog fanciers, dog rescue, pet services, pet shops, and kennels, six point one-six, rabies control and animal bites, six point two-oh, animal restrictions and impoundment, six point two-four, animal mistreatment and cruelty, and six point two-eight, investigation, citations, penalties, and providing for all other properly related matters. This is being brought forward by our Assistant Community Services Manager, Brooke Ady, and Animal Control, I'm not exactly sure what your title is, but Liz Begovic. So, Ms. Begovic?
Thank you. That was a mouthful. You didn't miss ferret this time. Thank you, Liz Begovic, Animal Services Supervisor. Thank you to the board for allowing the opportunity to present the extensive rewrite of Title VI, and thank you for your dedication and commitment to our community. I would also like to take a moment to take, to thank Zach Wadley for, from the DA's office, Scott Morgan, and Brooke Ady for their help in this project. While the majority of you are familiar with the services that Animal Services provides, I would like to briefly define our services to those who may not be aware of our purpose and mission. First and foremost, Douglas County Animal Services is the designated rabies control authority and investigates all reports of animal bites to humans by rabies susceptible species, and reports rabies exposure cases to the state as required. The department is also required to maintain rabies vaccination information through the dog licensing program, issuing an average of one thousand dog licenses per year. Animal Services promotes and protects public safety and animal care through education and animal law enforcement. The enforcement of Title VI is performed by Animal Services officers and myself, in which we are authorized to issue citations and present animal. which we are authorized to issue citations and present animal cases through the DA's office. Our officers respond to an average of 1,500 calls of service per year, which include animal bites, loose dogs, animal attacks, welfare checks, barking dogs, cruelty investigations, kennel inspections, injured pets, deceased animal pickups, emergency impounds, evacuations, just to name a few. Animal Services also provides a successful adoption program consisting of mainly dogs and cats, adopting out an average of 300 animals per year. With that being said, I would like to continue with the main points of the rewrite of Title VI. Largely, the rewrite aligns with the existing animal codes, provides additional definitions to the reorganization of the document. These additions will improve public safety and animal welfare. The significant points I would like to highlight today are the following. A dangerous dog classification has been added in order to potentially reduce the chance of injury to another person or animal. A dog may be declared vicious by, or, excuse me, dangerous by an Animal Services officer for acts or actions that are less severe than a vicious dog. Vicious dog requirements will not apply to a dangerous dog, however, a citation may be issued to the dog owner. Under the vicious dog classification, an annual inspection of the required, an annual inspection of the required secure confinement area has been added to ensure that all equipment, such as required leash and muzzles, warning signs, secure pens, or residential dwelling is sound and maintained in good repair to prevent the dog or dogs from escaping the premises or potentially harming another person or animal. Under animal mistreatment and cruelty-
In progress.
Ms. Paula, is there, Ms. Luckrich, is there a public comment?
Comment online at this time.
Thank you. So we'll bring it back to the board, and I will entertain a motion. I would suggest maybe just say adopt ordinance and the number. It's up to you.
I move to adopt ordinance 2022-1601, as submitted.
Thank you. Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Ingalls, seconded by Commissioner Rice, to adopt ordinance 2022-1601, as presented. Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Are we, thank you very much. I guess that's it. Yep, appreciate it. And do we need to take a slight break?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I was just informed that we lost YouTube. You could proceed without that, it does look like Zoom is up. I was just informed that we were getting some water penetration in the Minden Inn through the skylights, and I did receive a report earlier of a debris and water flow on South Foothill Road, heading towards Fredericksburg and on the California side of the line. So we're obviously getting some impacts from the storm that may have something to do with YouTube. So your discretion, whether you want to continue without YouTube, or you want to take a break and see if we can resolve that issue.
I personally probably need to use the facilities, so let's resume at 3:30, is that good? 3:30, and that'll give IT an opportunity to try. If we can't do it, we can't do it, okay? Thank you. Well, we're in recess until 3:30.
Recording in progress. Recording in progress.
Okay, it is 3:30 and we are back having Zoom and YouTube available for the public. Okay, so we'll move on to item number 10. The four attending commissioners are back in session for presentation only, so we will not be accepting public comment on this one. The first reading of ordinance 2022-1603, a zoning text amendment, reference DP 22-0145, amending section 20.703.090, use subsection .080, public service of the Douglas County Code related to the Tahoe area plan regulations to authorize religious assemblies as a matter of right in the Lake Tahoe T-MU Tahoe mixed-use zoning district and eliminate the need for a special use permit. This is being presented by Deputy District Attorney Sam Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, as you noted during the introduction here, this is the first reading of this ordinance. All that we're required to do under 2100 is to read this title into the record, which you have done. But if you have any questions at this time, I'm available to answer them.
Thank you. Commissioners? Why would you bring this?
Big surprise, wasn't it?
Commissioner Ingalls? Commissioner Rice?
I have no questions. So this was, this did go through the Planning Commission.
That's correct.
And passed.
That is correct.
Seven to zero. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. So now it's before us. Okay, so we'll hear this item in two weeks.
That's my understanding. I still got to confirm with Nikki Leeper that it's been noticed in a timely manner, but other than that, yes.
Very good. No other questions?
Thanks.
We'll move along to item number 11 for possible action. Discussion on the adoption of resolution 2022R-081 to amend the Douglas County, North Douglas County specific plan, DP 22-0103, to change the use matrix to allow independent, congregate, senior living community and nursing convalescent residential care facility by way, oh, excuse me, by way of a special use permit in the multifamily residential zoning district. The subject parcels are located south of Topsie Lane and east of Highway 395 within the Indian Hills-Jacks Valley Community Plan. The property owners submitting the request are Riverwood Partners LLC. The affected parcel numbers within the specific plan are 1420-06-701-009 and 1420-05-201-011. And this is being presented by Ms. Rao. With the assistance of-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Lucio Rayo, Community Development. Just give me a second here. Let me just double check with staff if I need to share or if they're sharing. Okay. Sounds like it's me. I didn't see the share thing, that's why I asked. All right. Okey-dokey. Okay. There we go. All right. Okay, so this is an amendment to the specific plan. I know there may have been some confusion. I know there was some confusion when I went to the Planning Commission. They thought it was for the special use permit. It is not, it's just for an amendment to the specific plan. So I just wanted to make that clear. So this is, is within the North Douglas County specific plan, which is in the north end of Douglas County, along the borderline of Carson City, Highway 395 and Topsie Lane. It's, the parcels are multi-zoned. We're specifically talking about a change within the multifamily residential zoning district portion of the North Douglas County specific plan. So the specific plan is comprised of 624 acres. As I stated, it's in the North County in the Jacks Valley Indian Hills Community Plan along 395 and Topsie. You can find the discussion and background on packet page 571. The specific plan must be amended in order to accommodate the proposed changes to the table of allowable land uses that are currently within the specific plan. County Code allows these uses within the multifamily residential zoning district with a special use permit. For some reason, it was not included in the specific plan. Staff does not know why it was not included originally in the specific plan. Maybe because that use was not projected to happen in that area, but now things have changed, the economy has changed. There's lots of reasons why we need that use now. So as I stated, it's not within the specifics plan matrix, and we're asking that it to be added. So on July 12th, the Planning Commission voted 7-0 to approve the amendment to the specific plan. This is the proposed changes to the existing table of uses within the specific plan, and that is also in your packet. County Code allows it, as you can see in the highlighted area, so in the multifamily residential zoning district with a special use permit. The uses are allowed that they are proposing in the specific plan. This is the definitions of the uses. So a nursing convalescent or residential care facility provides 24-hour care to persons who are not related by blood marriage or adoption to the owner, operator, manager. Independent congregant senior living community is independent living community that entails private dwelling units designed for adult population 55 and older with some supportive services. It could have meals and housekeeping. Some health and supportive services could be associated with that as well. Did not receive any public comment for this board item. Here are the findings, and they start on your packet page, packet page 575. Staff believes the findings can be made in the affirmative for the requested amendment to the North Douglas County specific plan. We are, staff is recommending that the board approve resolution 2022R-081 to amend the North Douglas County specific plan, allowing for the change to table 3.1 and ensuring that the specific plan is consistent with its original approval and proposed amendment. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant's representative, Chris Baker, is here as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rao. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Ingalls?
This area is currently zoned SFR, is that correct?
For the record, Lucio Rayo, Community Development. I'll go back to the zoning map. There's multiple zonings within the North Douglas County specific plan. The area with the star is multifamily residential zoning, where this use is, will be, is proposed to be located.
Is this, I don't know. Tom, you might be able to help out. Will this be a commercial endeavor?
Tom Delaire, for the record, it will. They do have a proposed project that's moving forward. This is the first step in that process. They, it wasn't included for some reason in the table. It's currently allowed in our code. And so within that multifamily residential zoning, we have to approve a special use permit. And so they have that lined up to be, to go back to the Planning Commission to get that approval if you guys approve the update to the specific plan today.
So the folks that are in this area, they won't, they won't own the properties that they're in? How is this going to work?
That, that is correct. It's going to be a complex that gets developed that these individuals would then reside within.
Thank you.
So Ms. Rao and Mr. Delaire, as I understand it, this resolution strictly changes the use matrix. It does not approve any project whatsoever. That still would require the specific project to go before the Planning Commission for approval and meet whatever requirements that they have in place for issuance of an S U P for that particular property. Am I correct in that process?
For the record, Lucio Rayo, that is correct. Next week, we'll be going to Planning Commission. We'll be bringing the special use permit forward for approval or denial to the Planning Commission for this project.
Okay. And this is, and this is already, this area is already zoned multifamily residential. Is this consistent with our multifamily residential zoning districts throughout the county? Or is this a special process for this particular property?
As you can see in the matrix on the screen there, it isn't allowed use within Douglas County in the multifamily residential zoning district. We're asking that the specific plan align with Douglas County Code.
Okay. And the, so yeah, we really can't discuss the actual project. All we're doing is changing the matrix and changing it to be consistent with other multifamily resident areas within our county.
For the record, Lucio Rayo, that is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So questions we would have in regards to that will probably be coming before us at a later date. So any other questions by the commissioners?
Okay. So all we're doing is discussing the change of the possible, the possible change of the matrix that is consistent with the rest of the county. Is there, this is a possible action item, so if no questions remain from the board, we'll go to public comment on this. Is there any public comment here in chambers?
Paula Lockridge, for the record. Currently, there is no public comment online.
That was a little premature, but I appreciate that.
James McCallum, for the record. I really recommend that you do this. A lot of us have older family members and that we want to have facilities that they could stay in within the county. And I'd hope to get this built for when I need it, which sometimes seems sooner than later. I think it fills a need for the community, and I hope you'll pass this.
Are you indicating that's pending by your wife? For use of it? Okay. Since he no other public comment here in chambers, and Ms. Lockridge already indicated we do not have any public comment online. So we'll bring it back to the board for possible action. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt resolution 2022R-081, amending the North Douglas County specific plan, amending table 3.1 to allow independent, congregant, senior living community and nursing convalescent residential care facility by way of special use permit in the multifamily residential zoning district and ensuring that the specific plan is consistent with its original proposal and proposed amendment.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingalls for the adoption of resolution 2022R-081 as presented. Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. We are, we have already covered item 12, and so we're now into item 13. For presentation only, reports and updates from county commission members concerning the various boards and/or commissions that they may be a member of or liaison to or meeting functions they have attended. Commissioner Tarkanian, do you have anything to share with us today? Okay, Commissioner Ingalls? Commissioner Rice?
Yes, sir. And they're discussing how we can intermingle our transportation districts throughout the Tahoe region. I just beat myself. And trying to intertie the new proposed bus transportation in the, near the event center and at some point connecting it so that will be lake-wide along with tentacles reaching down here into the valley.
Okay. Thank you very much. And the only thing I have to share is I did participate with the Chamber of Commerce in a board retreat last week and looking at their, the Carson Valley Chamber of Commerce and looking at their new board and their directions this year. So, and that's obviously an ongoing discussion. So anyways, that's all I have to report. And so at this time, sensing no other discussion by the board members, we'll go to public, closing public comment. Public comment will be taken on those items or within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of Commissioners or those agenda items where public comment has not already been taken. Ms. Lockridge, do we have any, is there any public comment here in chambers? Is there anybody here in chambers of the public? Okay. Ms. Lockridge?
Paula Lockridge, for the record, there is no public comment online.
Very good. So with that, Commissioner Tarkanian.
So I just wanted to talk about, we had a town hall in Lake Tahoe yesterday. Commissioner Gardner was supposed to join me, but he had unfortunately to cancel, and so Commissioner Wes Rice did. It was by far the best town hall we've had since I've been on the board. We had over 100 people there. The only problem was there wasn't enough room for everybody to get in. They were standing and sitting outside on the patio. They were sitting in the adjacent room. Casey's did a great job providing us with the microphone. And it's the first time I had the opportunity to eat there. Oh my goodness, it was phenomenal. And I need to do a small business Saturday there because that place was great. I'm sure they don't need any promotion because it was packed. But anyways, we had an opportunity to talk about a bunch of different items, dealing with Lake Tahoe. Very passionate, the people were very passionate about them. V H R's dominated the conversation at the end, but there were still a lot of other discussions that we had. And I appreciate Commissioner Rice being there because he was able to answer a lot of the questions I didn't. I have had several people reach out to me and say, hey, they couldn't get in because of how crowded it was. Can we do something up there again? And I think that if we could do something before the V H R vote, that would be really good. I also think it was a good idea, and this came from Commissioner Gardner, and God, I hate to keep praising him, but about going to different locations. It meant a lot to go up there. I think the next one we should do is out in Topaz, so you don't have to drive very far.
Well, depends on whether the roads are still available with this rain. So, okay. Sensing no other public comment, at this time, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.